Thank you. I'm reconvening in public session, the Burbank Unified School District Board Meeting of Thursday, October 21st. I would like to remind everyone, please, to have a mask on at all times while you're in the meeting. I think everyone does, which is great. Thank you very much. And I will ask Mr. Sinevoy, would you care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark, will you please take the roll call?
Member Aga Khanian?
Here.
Member Weisberg?
Present.
Clerk Ferguson?
Here.
Vice President Tabit?
Here.
And President Fritner.
Here. Thank you very much. Reporting out on closed session, closed session items 3A through 3D were for discussion only with no action taken. Number six, adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Dr. Hill?
Yes, President Fritner, I'd like to be able to introduce our new Food Service Director at the beginning of the meeting.
I'd love to have that. Please, so pleased.
So we'll have Ms. Kaktah go to the podium. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Carrie Bogdanovich. As we know, Kathy Sessinghaus is retiring, although her last day is not until the end of the year. But we had Carrie join us last week, and so I'd like to give her an opportunity to tell you a little bit about her.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Carrie Bogdanovich. I grew up in Sandyvale Valley. I've been in school nutrition for about 26 years, been a director since around 2003. I attended school here in Woodbury and got my bachelor's of science and my master's from Woodbury University. And my whole life has been school nutrition, so I'm just happy to be part of the Burbank community and family. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the district. Do we have any further adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, items for future agendas. Mr. Ferguson?
President Ferguson, thank you. I have two items that I just hope we can eventually bring back for either conversation or discussion. First is to ask staff to begin reaching out to our bargaining groups. You know, a little background on this, through the conversations that we've had in the subcommittee about school resource officers, we are realizing more now than ever that making sure position titles are aligned with core functions of employees is really important. So students know who to go to, parents know who to go to for different services. Sometimes when you go by a broad title like counselor, right, you may not know what kind of counseling that person offers. And so what I would like to ask is for staff to begin outreach to secondary, to discuss the titles of school counselors and intervention specialists, and ask that those titles be reviewed to see if they most clearly express the core functions of the role as it relates to students and student health and well-being. So asking for that item in discussion to come back. And then also asking for staff to draft a resolution of the board directing both our bargaining team and the calendar committee after we've completed transitioning of our payroll systems, et cetera, to begin the work to include the Jewish High Holidays along with the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day in future calendars moving forward. So again, after all transitions that are currently occurring through software programs, you name it, because we are in the middle of that, that we direct the calendar committee and our bargaining units to accommodate those days into our school calendar. So asking for that item to come back as a discussion for the board to discuss at a future meeting.
Made note of those two. Thank you. Any other items for future agendas? I am seeing none, so we'll move on to item 8A, Presentation on Burbank Arts and Education Foundation Fall Grant Cycle. Ms. Casao.
Thank you, President Fritner. I'd like to introduce Anna Connell, the co-chair of the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, and Alexandra Helfrich, Grants and Giving Chair, who will present the outcomes of the fall grant cycle.
Good evening, President Fritner, esteemed board members, Dr. Hill, BUSD staff, and everybody watching at home. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Before we get on to our exciting presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that supported and that also came out for our impact event last Friday. It was really a magical evening. It was just amazing. And so we so appreciate your support, the community support, and we thank you hugely. And for anybody looking for information, don't forget to visit our website, burbankartsanded.org. And with that, I'm going to get to the exciting part of our presentation, and I'm going to hand it over to our Chair of Grants and Giving, Alexandra Helfrich.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Hill, and BUSD administrators. We are delighted to share with you the results of our second cycle of grant funding from the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation in the amount of $57,244.73. I'd like to add that we were able to fund every single application, and that was especially exciting for us. We were pleased to be able to support a robust variety of applications from most of our school sites. And especially inspiring is the innovation and excellence demonstrated by educators who bring diverse projects, materials, and ideas to their students. We're proud to partner with the Burbank Unified School District in making improvements to school auditoriums and piloting assistive technology software to support special education students, as well as programs that help students make the transition back to campus with social and emotional learning strategies, among the many other exciting programs. Could you please share the video now? Thank you, Dr. Pramo. Highlights from these investments include elementary-level support for dance and instrumental music instruction, hands-on STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, math, supplies and materials, books for classroom libraries to support high-level learners, social and emotional learning, and diversity, equity, and inclusion, so that students may see themselves and learn about others, school sustainability efforts, yoga and mindfulness, visual arts teaching artists, along with supplies and materials and auditorium upgrades. The foundation is especially pleased to support an assistive technology pilot program to assist special education students with writing and reading comprehension throughout all middle schools. Other middle school support includes learning to code with robots, instrumental music coaching, classroom libraries, supplies and materials for lessons in ancient Egypt, and the beginning of the printing press, and a mosaic mural teaching artist with supplies and materials for on-campus instruction. Support for high schools is provided by funding for acoustic panels to transform a STEAM lab into a more usable space, supplies and materials for culinary arts, to make gingerbread houses in particular, equipment to set up an aquarium for marine biology classes, and critical essential auditorium upgrades. So joining us today in chambers, we have grant recipients here, including, and I'm going to ask them to join us up here, and we will invite the school board members and admin team to join us to accept this big check. And if you'll allow us to take a photograph to commemorate this moment of being able to be together and share this giving in person. So among our grant recipients that we have today are Brenda Eterbeek from Edison, Eric Carter, representing BUSD Special Education, I believe we have Pia Valenciano, Jackie Hackbarth, Leslie Anne Stone Malkoff from Emerson, Jennifer Griffith from Miller, Allison Edge, our BUSD NAF Academy Director, along with Vaheek Kodagolian from Burbank High, and some of our board members. I know Jan LaRiga is here. I'm not sure if Freddie made it. But if you're here, please join us. If I've missed anybody else, I apologize, and do please join us as well. Thank you. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's squeeze in. And I'm sorry for those of you who, I hope I didn't mistake anybody's names.
Yeah, we can do this. This is good.
This is working? Okay.
There's just not enough room in the world. You're too short.
Do we need to step in?
I know, it's hard. We'll be a dick pic.
I know, we're all still smiling.
It's smizing.
It's just in the eyes.
The model.
Thank you all so much. KK's taking one more. One more, one more. Almost. Our fearless coordinator, KK.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And as my fellow board members get back to our seats, would anyone like to comment? Dr. Weisberg, we'll start with you, since you're already seated.
Yes, I am. Just a huge thank you to the foundation. The event was really a lot of fun. It's great to see so much enthusiasm and passion and support, and it's really exciting to see the diversity in the programming that we're supporting through the grant funding. I cannot wait to see what all of these programs look like once they've started up, and I'm just really excited and really impressed by all of the teachers and all of the people who took the time to do the grant application, because that's no small feat as well. So I'm really looking forward to see what comes next, and thank you so much for your partnership to the foundation. It means an enormous amount.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you. So again, I think "thank you" kind of scratches the surface of just how much work has gone into making this possible. And so, you know, just to zoom out for a bit, you know, we've all been managing this little thing called COVID-19. We've all been dealing with this, right? Well, try starting a foundation in the middle of a pandemic, right? Try merging two foundation cultures into one, then trying to coordinate how to continue to fundraise, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, right, to continue to support and to continue to drive giving, in many cases, because without that giving, the program doesn't happen. So to be able to do that, then to organize an event for a few hundred people as kind of the comeback, frankly, from a very long winter of sequestration is really quite telling and quite incredible. So I want to thank the foundation board for all the struggles, both seen and unseen, to make the event happen, to make this giant check happen, and for really keeping us on pace and on track as we've asked you to do the impossible. So again, no matter how we all struggle through this, the impact couldn't be greater, and when you see people coming together and putting aside the differences for kids and delivering in such big ways, that is contagious leadership. And I just have to thank you sincerely, on behalf of the community, for doing this work, as thankless as it is at times, so that you can do this, this one night, and to have this one moment, because it will mean so much to kids moving forward. So again, thanks for being allies.
Dr. Aga Khanian?
Thank you, Mr. Fritner. So as a director of another foundation far from here, I can tell you how difficult it is to even get grants now. It's very competitive because of COVID. The philanthropy world is not what it used to be. So I'm so happy to see, A, us getting the money, you getting the money, but also all the volunteers who are involved. Sometimes people forget that the world of philanthropy itself is really the backbone of a lot of the educational institutions out there. So I want to thank you for not only starting this, because, you know, we had talks at the beginning about the organization and what the messaging will be, but I can tell you, the way the event was organized, the way it was conducted, the messaging was just wonderful. So thank you for all you do, and I look forward to hearing more stories about, you know, all your success stories and more grants. So thank you very much.
Ms. Tab?
I know how much work all of you have put into this organization, because in the very beginning, I met with a few of you to talk about how, what the vision would be for one ed foundation in the city. And I think this group, bringing the two together, has done such an amazing job, even though the focus was similar, what's good and what can we do for our kids in this community to make our school district an even better place than it already is. They came from two separate thought processes, but you've brought them together and are as successful, if maybe not more, than the two groups separately. So it's so fun and fascinating to see how well you've worked. Okay, maybe it wasn't always easy or well done, but you did it. You overcame whatever obstacles were in the way, and I'm so impressed by this grant cycle and some of the things that Alexandra was talking about that will be seen in our classrooms and at our school sites that may not have happened had you not joined together and came forward and brought this. So it's so appreciated. It's only for the betterment of the kids in our district, and I can't thank you enough, because I know that you all threw yourselves into it to get this accomplished and done. So thank you. And now you've set the bar, folks. So, you know, you're going to have to keep rising to meet that bar or jump above it. And knowing who's on this board and part of this organization, you got it. So thank you very much.
And I don't want to just parrot everything my colleagues have said so eloquently, but I do thank you and congratulate you, first of all, on both a very successful inaugural event of the combined organization last Friday and the hard work that the combined foundation has been doing. We know, as has been said, how much, both organizations were supportive of the district in the past, and now combining together and working so well as a united organization. This grant cycle was fantastic. I had heard at the event last Friday, as Ms. Helfrich pointed out, that all of the grants were funded, which is just fantastic. That hasn't always been able to be the case in the past, so it's just incredible that that was able to happen. And, you know, just beyond that, the financial support that the foundation has provided for the district and will continue to provide, I know we've worked together to identify, you know, funding opportunities, you know, for supporting the district, and we'll continue to, you know, look for those and identify those as we go forward. But the work you've all put in, you know, having, as Ms. Tabit pointed out, we've all kind of worked in that area prior to being on the board and even while we've been on the board, and it's not easy, and it's all volunteer work. So thank you and congratulations on, like I said, a great event, and thank you so much for the money for the district. We'll move on to reports from the board, starting with our student representatives. And up first tonight is Ms. Terpetrosian from Burbank High.
President Fritner, could I just correct one thing real quick on the new agenda item?
Sure.
So part of the motion, as Ms. Terpetrosian comes up, a part of my motion earlier on the calendar item, if we can also have DEI Committee draft a policy for future holidays or commemorations, establish thresholds, something like that within the DEI Committee. So if we need to adopt future calendar changes or holidays based off of cultural traditions in the community, that we have a policy in place and thresholds established to do that. Thank you. Sorry, just cleaning that up.
If I mispronounced your name, I apologize.
No, no, you said it perfectly. Good evening, poor President Fritner, members of the board, superintendent Hill, and senior staff. Homecoming is this Saturday in the quad. Our homecoming court was announced on October 15th. The junior, sophomore, and freshman winners and the top six senior nominees were revealed, but two senior winners will be announced at 10:15, a homecoming night where votes will be counted that day. Next week, the week of the 25th to the 29th, is our Spirit Week, which includes Dress Like Your Favorite Staff Member Monday, Country vs. Country Club Tuesday, Dress Like an Elderly Wednesday, Greek Life Thursday, and on Friday, Wear Your Halloween Costumes. With each day of Spirit Week, we will have a lunchtime activity in the quad where at least one person from each class will compete against the rest engaged such as musical chairs and pumpkin decorating. Our Spirit Week leads to our rally day and homecoming game on the 29th. ASB has been working tirelessly on our preparations for a rally which will be held on our field instead of the gym this year. It's our first rally of the year, so we're super excited and excited to honor our fall sports and to raise spirits through various activities. And the theme for this rally is Mont Staubert, where each class has a Halloween movie theme. So freshmen's are Nightmare Before Christmas, sophomores are Addams Family, juniors are Halloween Town, and seniors are Hocus Pocus. Their class posters would also follow their theme. Burbank will have the home site this year for the big game. Tickets are going to be obtained a little differently now. Students with an ASB card must reserve a ticket beforehand within these two days to secure a spot at the game because of the lowered capacity limit. Our dance teams unleashed an advanced dance performed on October 14th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Burbank Town Center as a fundraiser, and we are so thankful for the Burbank community for donating. For our arts department, the Wizard of Oz Drama Show is still showing this Friday and Saturday in the Wolfson Auditorium, so make sure to attend. Burbank's Vocals' A Night of Magic fundraiser gala and dinner is on Saturday, October 30th, at 6:30 PM in the quad. It's a great opportunity to see the talent of our amazing students. Burbank's animation was represented at the 2021 All-American High School Film Festival. The film's disparity and cavity were screened in New York. We are so proud of our filmmakers, Jordan Barlin and Spence Niklaus. Our clubs have been working hard on improving our school's community, and CSF is offering tutoring in the library Mondays through Thursdays at 3:05 PM to 4:05 PM. We're blessed to have such dedicated and kind students. The Significance of Education Club is holding a book drive in collaboration with Reading Partners Los Angeles from October 15th to November 15th. To end off my report, I'm very pleased to say that our boys' water polo team won their recent game against Burrows, and their league record is now 6-0. Like our great principal, Dr. Crowder, says, it's still great to be a bulldog. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Oh, thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, please. I see Mr. Tachila is not here, so we'll move on to Ms. Reader from Burrows High School.
Good evening, board and all others in attendance tonight. Just to reintroduce myself to people who are new watching or in the audience, my name's Jewel Reader, and I'm the ASB president at John Burrows High School. To start off my report, I'm going to discuss the events that we've had on campus and other future events that we're really excited for. On October 16th, we had our homecoming dance, A Night in New York. The senior class hosted around 1,500 students at our outdoor formal dance and raised a lot of money for the senior class. The highlights of the night included the characteristic, the New York food courts, and the announcement of our first gender-neutral homecoming royalty in court. Our fall sports have also been coming to an end, which means that our Burbank vs. Burrows homecoming game is coming up on the October 29th, along with our rally to celebrate our fall sports. Aside from our rivalry in sports between Burbank High, ASB is participating in our yearly gift exchange with Burbank High ASB, where both groups give each other a gift to thank each other for all the hard work that both groups have done for their respective schools. Along with our fall sports season ending, we want to congratulate girls volleyball for remaining undefeated in their season this year and are playing in their first CIF game tonight, October 21st. Our wonderful Vocal Music Association is hosting Burrows on Broadway this weekend from October 22nd to the 24th. This is always a memorable show that our VMA works so hard to execute for the community. Lastly, JBHS has begun celebrating Filipino-American Heritage Month by sharing Filipino music during lunch with the student body. ASB is excited to have more events to highlight the Filipino culture and history on our campus. Next, I will share the positive changes that have happened on our campus recently. Our school newspaper, previously known as the Smoke Signal, has been working towards renaming the newspaper to fit our new mascot, the Bears. The student body has been included in the process through rounds of voting, and the last voting round to decide the new name ends on October 22nd. The finalists for names include the Ursa Major, the Bear Necessities, the Paw Print, the Grizzly Gazette, and the Burrows Sleuth. Our school newspaper is such an amazing aspect of our school, and we're really excited to hear the new name. In addition to this name change with the newspaper, the mascot committee had its first meeting on October 11th. The mascot committee consists of admin, staff, teachers, parents, athletes, and students from all different parts of our campus. The mascot committee is working alongside our branding company to give John Burrows an official new mascot to match the decision we made over the last school year to be the Bears. Next, I wanted to report on one negative change on campus that has recently happened. We have stopped all school COVID-19 testing due to lack of funds, and students feel it's important to make bringing testing back a priority for BUSD, and feel strongly that it has improved our campus and made our students feel safer at school. The most important thing in the eyes of any school is to keep their students safe and feeling comfortable at school, and weekly testing was a huge contributor to the improvement of the student experience at Burrows. Thank you so much, and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say thank you. We talked, I think we talked about this a little bit before. I appreciate that you're coming both with exciting news and also some challenges for us. I think it's really important that you let us know areas that you are struggling with and areas that you are successful in. So I just want to, I know it can't feel great to come up and say this is a thing that we're not happy about, but I want to commend you for it, and I appreciate it, and I hear it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Want to check in, you had talked about, two meetings ago, I believe, the issue with tables at lunch, and whether or not that's been resolved.
I have not noticed any new tables at our school, but I'm hoping that that comes soon. I was told that it was going to take a couple months for them to come, but we still have a lot of students that are just sitting on the floor at our school, in our halls and on the quad, and I just don't think that that's, like, adequate for students. So I hope to see those new tables soon.
Okay. So maybe we can figure out a time where I can come on campus next week during lunch, and we can take a look at that.
That'd be great.
You know, just so we can see that, and, you know, again, logistically and supply chain-wise, let me just tell you, I'm waiting on even a couch. So like, things are taking a long time to move, so I understand that, but if there's other accommodations we can make or things you want to point out possibly while we visit, I think that's going to be important. So. So, um, on the testing side, you know, the superintendent, I'm sure will have updates and more detailed information there. I, I have also heard from folks as well, including student athletes, who are now having to go pay for tests because they are required to utilize tests at different, for private leagues, et cetera, to participate, they need to provide pre-COVID tests. So some folks were utilizing the school-based testing in order to do that, and so now it's a little bit more inconvenient, et cetera. So there are, so, there are going to be some lingering impacts, but it'll be interesting to see if we get additional funding to resume or wherever we're going to be with that.
Thank you so much.
And we'll circle back on scheduling for next week.
Perfect.
Dr. Hill?
I just want to add some, I appreciate the feedback, that's, we encourage that feedback. I just want to share, for the public, I found out today from the head nurse, Lenore Aguilera, that the students at John Burrows, 80% are vaccinated. And so for the point, for any student athlete to perform, if you're vaccinated, you don't need that weekly test. And the other great news I heard from Dr. Chambers is that John Burrows has not had a COVID case on campus in 30 days. And so the testing, and I just want to highlight, the testing was searching for those cases. You haven't had it, and so the testing wasn't identifying cases. The behaviors of the students and the families is what's been keeping students safe at John Burrows. Vaccinated students, masking, social distancing, it, the testing is an afterfact, because that's when you're catching cases. We're not having cases at John Burrows and at the high schools. I just want to encourage all of our students, if they haven't and you can, get vaccinated. And the second, we are still for students that are participating in sports and activities, it's still free testing for BUSD students that participate in those activities. And third, if you're performing or working outside Burbank, if you're vaccinated, you don't need that test. So I just want to highlight that, because I want to appreciate, so you have a broader context of why it's the funding, but also at the high school level, it's to get vaccinated, you don't need the test.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reader.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 10, Request to Address the Board. Any individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction by completing a blue request card. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent to the Board of Education. Superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. And I would just like to add, before we move on to public comment, we do not have any agenda items tonight regarding masking, regarding vaccine mandates, whether it's student or staff. We have addressed these many times in the last several meetings. Again, people can come and comment as they want, but as far as responses, we will limit our responses because we have responded several times over to all of these queries, so. All right, we'll move on to our first speaker is Joel Schlossman, to be followed by Karen Lau.
Good evening, everybody. President Fritner, I'm going to ask that you censure Dr. Agaganyan. This man cannot get to a meeting on time. These meetings start at 6 o'clock, and for years, years, he's been late. Last, at the last meet, last month, we had one meeting, he collected $507, over $600 if you include the CalPERS contribution. I'm not interested in excuses, I'm interested in setting a good example. And we wouldn't put up with it if our students were habitually late, and we wouldn't put up with it if our employees were habitually late. Now, I understand he's elected, he really wanted to get elected, re-elected really bad. Get here on time. Everybody else does. Okay. This was from the LA Times regarding COVID. Teachers confronted with losing their jobs, 99% of LAUSD teachers met the COVID, uh, the COVID-19 vaccine requirements. Funny how that works when you're going to lose your job or lose your income, you all of a sudden get the shot. Vaccinating, vaccinations work. Okay, Ms. Talbot, there was an incident where three of our, our citizens lost their lives, and you talked about it. And I don't call it an accident, I call it an incident, because it wasn't an accident, it was predictable. So, you talked about what you could do as a board, so here's an idea for you. Work with the police department and get the name of every student who gets a citation, whether it's for a DUI, and they, they get it for drinking and smoking marijuana and all kinds of other stuff. Speeding, exhibition of speed, and you folks measure out the consequences, whatever they should be. Because, you know, if your 10 cents overdue on a library book, you can't participate in homecoming, graduation. You have, you have standards, and we expect our students to be good citizens inside the school and outside of the school as well. So, you know, why should they be able to play on a sports team if they're out driving 100 miles an hour on our roads? So that's an idea for you. Now, regarding this TikTok deal of school vandalism, your employees have reported to me that it's substantial vandalizing the bathrooms. My own son reports to me that many of your bathrooms are closed due to vandalism. What is our superintendent doing about it besides sending an email to the parents? You know, I want action. Do you have a, do you have a, an anonymous way that kids can report it? How about posting up a reward? And, 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 you know, find out who's doing this. How about putting a camera on the outside of the bathroom and look who's going in, so you know who potentially could have caused the damage? I'd expect more from our superintendent regarding this. Now, finally, another component of that was violence against, violence against the staff. I hope that you remind our employees that they didn't give up their rights to self-defense. And if somebody is, smacks one of our employees, I hope they beat the hell out of them and pay them back, right on the spot. And that's how it should be handled. Self-defense. Now, why is it when, if two students get into a fight and one guy's an aggressor and another fellow defends himself, why is that person suspended automatically? Why is it that if the adults have the right to self-defense, why don't the students have a right to self-defense without fear of being suspended? You know? And it does a good thing. It teaches the bully to stop bullying, and the kid who's bullied, all of a sudden feels good about himself or herself. So give that some thought, please. Let's make this a better community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Lau, to be followed by Jarrett Waddell.
It's all of us together, is that okay? We're just top kids. And they need to go to bed. Hi, good evening, Dr. Hill, board members, vice superintendent, Fritner Ferguson, Agaganyan and staff members. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership during this period of tough decision-making for the public health of the students and the school community. Very hard, indeed, so I thank you for your, your time and energy on that. And though recent events and mandates have brought much debate, there's one public health threat that we all happen to be on the same team, and that is in dealing with our climate emergency. My name is Karen Lau, I'm a Burbank resident. These are my colleagues, Amy Serio and Melissa Thompson and her children. And, and we are, first, I'm a mother of two at Roosevelt Elementary and co-founder of the Burbank Eco Council. We are the Eco Council, it's a volunteer organization working on elevating the environmental practices in the school ecosystem. The hope is to nurture and nourish our students to be leaders and stewards for our home planet. We're made of passionate parents, stupendous students and tenacious teachers. Now, Dr. Hill, I know we have a meeting set up, and I'm looking forward to it, but I wanted to take this opportunity to express our commitment to see environmental and essential, like, human rights leadership at the helm for our students' health and wellbeing. Our request is for a dedicated district committee to start a dialogue to take on these environmental affairs, seeking and receiving opportunities to green our schools, reduce waste, increase renewable energy, increase regenerative practices, increase the resilience of our ecosystem, STEM integration, and really explore environmental pathways for this generation and many more to come. And as you can see here, we are dedicated members of the community, already doing the groundwork, building the relationships, creating the systems, exploring collaborations and learning about biodiversity, and we need your support. So, Dr. Hill, I look forward to our meeting and supporting your, your vision and our students' wellbeing.
Hi, um, I am Claudia Thompson. I just wanted to say, um... Everyone out there, the parents are going to be handing over the world to their children, and their children are going to be handing over the world to their children. And each generation will use resources, and soon our ancestors will, well, next generations will run out of resources and cannot live. So, we have to turn that around now.
Hi, I'm Melissa Thompson. These are my kiddos, and I'm doing my best to teach them sustainability practices and to also be involved with my school and with other parents to, you know, we should all have our own mugs, we should all be using reusable grocery bags, those are the basics. And recycling is, is not that difficult, but not enough people are doing it, and those, that is just the start of it. We need, uh, we need bigger, broader change, we need people at the top telling everyone how important it is, and I think that a sustainability committee for the district would have a, a big impact, so, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Amy Serio, I'm a Burbank resident, Burbank business owner, parent of two kids in BUSD schools, chair of the Dolores Huerta Middle School PTSA Sustainability Committee, and member of the Burbank Eco Council. Do you know when the best time to plant a tree is? It's yesterday. Do you know when the best time for BUSD to address climate emergency is? Right now. For the future of the 15,280 students attending Burbank schools, our district needs to work to reduce our collective environmental footprint immediately. I came tonight to express my support for creating a dedicated sustainability committee at the district level. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jarrett Waddell, to be followed by Max Sinavoy.
Good evening, Dr. Hill, good evening, Mr. Fritner, and the rest of board members, appreciate it. Thank you for your service, really appreciate it. My name is Jarrett Waddell, I'm a resident here at Burbank, about 35 years now, I'm a Bell Jeff alumni. I have four children, two that are grown, that have graduated from Burrows, one currently at Burrows, one at Dolores Huerta. And I'm also married, been married for 21 years now. For the past 15 years, I've seen several girls suffer emotionally from the verbal abuse, unnecessary anger, and unconventional methods of the Burrows High School girls' basketball coaches, Ms. Victoria Ogunyan and Mr. Sullivan. As a high school basketball player at Billerman Jefferson, a local youth coach, and a father of three daughters who all played for Burrows High School under Ogunyan, I have witnessed dozens of, dozens of girls deal with humiliation, unfairness and verbal assaults. I probably should have come forward years earlier, but when it's not your child directly involved, sometimes you look away. Now it's my child involved. As one of the current children suffering, I feel obligated to report this matter as bullying. My daughters, Sorai Waddell and Stephanie Wilson, were recently humiliated by being two-year varsity players that had to try out and then demoted to JV as seniors. I have never seen a varsity senior try out at Burrows or any school. I have never seen a senior play JV, I have never seen a two-year varsity player or any other varsity player in general get demoted down to JV. Coach Ogunyan and Coach Sullivan have stripped my daughter's confidence enough with degrading comments, yelling, head trips, and hardly no playing time over the years, but this summer she started most of the games, as suddenly she was about to get what she worked for and waited for, and then it was stripped away as she was about to start her last year. There must be an alternative motive, because it's difficult to understand. Sorai, my daughter, isn't the only one that has been mishandled by these coaches, but also my oldest daughter, Erin, Jill, Kelly, Brittany, Shani, Alyssa, Veronica, Natalie, Paula, Stacy, Ashley, Melissa, Asia, Patty, Morgan Page, Sid, Stephanie, and others have all been emotionally scarred and/or unfairly discounted by the Burrows coaching staff. Many who have never reached their full potential but all have been affected by lengthy locker room talks, negative comments, badgering, and other unconventional methods that strip confidence and have a long-lasting effect on an individual. High school sports should teach those life lessons. Discipline, achievement through hard work, team concept, confidence, decision-making skills, et cetera, not rip hearts, confuse children's minds, and show no loyalty or comfort to kids. So to see what happened and is happening to my daughter reflects a bully technique that is trying to get his or her last punch in. Make her try out and put her on JV as a senior? Ridiculous, and I will not condone it, and I will not stand for it. I ask that this matter be investigated. I ask that players and parents be questioned confidentially. There are other forms of misconduct that Ms. Ogunyan and Mr. Sullivan have been involved in over the years that I wish not to disclose due to privacy. But I sincerely ask that this situation be investigated. Our children's lives are at stake, our child's minds are being manipulated, our children's hearts are being shattered. Crudeness, anger, unfairness, and especially bullying should not be tolerated on any level. Thank you for listening, change starts from within. And I'm saying all this for the future of the other kids that might pass through the program, thought, you know, I have a daughter that is a middle school at Dolores Huerta, so she might be attending there soon. We did have a parent-coaches meeting and try to resolve the situation, which seemed like things were moving forward, but Ms. Ogunyan did apologize a few times and asked the girls, asked if the girls wanted to be back on the team. But when the athletic director and Stephanie Wilson's father and I left the room so the girls could come into the office to make room, Mr. Sullivan started erratically yelling at Stephanie's mother and my wife loudly and profusely, in which made the girls leave the room and not want to join the team with these coaches. I just wanted to share that with you, and I thank you for listening. Any questions, by any chance?
We, we can't respond, we respond to all comments later on.
Awesome, all right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Max Sinavoy, to be followed by Lana Sinavoy.
Good evening, board, it's nice to be here again, and thank you for all of your hard service. I too am waiting for a couch, by the way. Yeah, last meeting was a very passionate meeting, you know, both sides, you know, it's been interesting, I've found like, as I've gotten older, I've learned one thing, definitely, and with age does come wisdom, and you see both sides of things. So that's all I'm trying to say here tonight, what I was trying to say last time as well. It's been interesting that, you know, when I was younger, there were things that I knew passionately, it's like, this is definitely right. And then as you get older, you really start hearing other people, and that's something I take a lot of great pride in. So, I'm not here to be pro or anti-vaccine, the only thing that I mention is about testing. Mr. Hill, I passionately disagree with what you said before, and I passionately disagree on behalf of vaccinated people, you know, everyone needs to be tested, everyone needs to be tested. Vaccinated people every day die of this disease, and, and every day spread the disease, to say that, that students or anyone should not be tested, I think is, is wrong. It's just, it's, it's a shame to vaccinated people to say that. Last time I spoke about Martin Luther King, he's someone that I admire, someone that I try and be like, try and do, do change through compassion. I was very surprised that there were a couple people on this board that were against that. I think it's always a good thing to, to remember the words of a wise person. to remember the words of a wise person, to remember the words of an American leader. So that was very surprising. And I think what the potential here is through this mandate, potential mandate, you know, we are discriminating and we are segregating our people. Those are what the facts are. There's no doubt about that. And we could avoid that. Like I said, we all want the same thing. Let's not talk about what we disagree with, but what do we all agree with, right? We all agree we want a safe community. We all agree we want our children to be in a safe place. And again, it comes back to testing. If, if people are, Apple just yesterday started this, uh, at their campus in Northern California. If you get a chance, look it up after the meeting. Apple started a policy in which, um, it's, it's an optional thing to be vaccinated. And if you choose not to, you need to get tested. You can't come onto their campus, uh, with the virus. And I think that's very smart. I think it's something to look at because to have one person let go, one person fired, you know, one child lose their school, lose their friends, to me, that's just, that's a pity. And I don't know if we have to go there. You know, if there's ways to not fire someone, if there's ways to avoid one more homeless person on our streets, you know, we're supposed to be a compassionate society, but how is this compassionate? You know, uh, and, and so when you search your head thinking of like, what can we do to avoid having less? And this is, you know, a macro picture here, you know, how can we, you know, save our policemen and save our firemen? Because, you know, as we talked about the last meeting, we all want a great community. You know, we all want a better community. And I just don't think that's the way to do it. I think we can have our cake. I think we can eat it too. You know, test everyone on a regular basis, make sure the virus is not coming into our schools. And those students, those employees, um, that, uh, that do not believe in it, for whatever the reason, you know, give them that, that opportunity. Let's not discriminate against them. Let's not segregate them from our population because where do those people go? I mean, we all have to ask ourselves, no matter what side we're on, what happens to those people? To those students that are kicked out of school, that lose their job, and they can't even get unemployment? I mean, that to me, I mean, again, you know, I just, I just wanted to bring that up. That's why I'm here. I don't want to argue with anyone. Like I said, I'm kind of Switzerland in this. I see both sides. You know, my family's made our decisions, which I'm not discussing, but, you know, for me, I just never, ever, you know, want to see someone, you know, be let out of a job or a child let out of a school. You know, that's a perfectly healthy person, you know, perfectly healthy. I mean, like we talked about earlier in this meeting. You know, um, we are so blessed to have, you know, no, you know, no students test positive. That's such a wonderful thing. You know, so if some of those students possibly were not vaccinated, they might be going home. I mean, you know, and I, I just don't see why. A perfectly healthy person, a perfectly healthy student, you know, should be led into our society. I think, you know, we talked about community matters. I, I don't think, you know, harming our community is the way about it. Uh, I just don't. You know, we talked about last time, waiting for the government and the FDA to kind of come back. But, you know, some of the greatest things in our country have been when we actually fought the government. Sometimes the government is, is wrong. You know, so I think if this board wanted to kind of take a compassionate approach to this, uh, and say to the leaders that be, you know, we are for our community, you know, we are for our people, that's not a bad thing also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me. Our next speaker is Lana Sinavoy, to be followed by Tracy Henry. And at the moment, that is the last card I have. So if anyone else would like to speak during public comment, please fill out a card now, and you can hand it to Ms. Clark. Uh, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Sinavoy.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I do want to follow up with what my husband just said and maybe speak for the people that might be let go. I believe tomorrow is the deadline. Um, I, I don't, I don't understand this, but this, the people that are going to be let go are the same people that came to work today. They came to work a week ago, a month ago, a year ago, and probably for many years before. You've had, um, communication with them on a daily basis. You've shared with them. And tomorrow, all of a sudden, they're a danger to us. I don't understand that. I think you guys should really rethink it. And, um, that's what I have to say about that. I do want to follow up from last, uh, the last meeting. Something sat very wrong with me. I was sitting there watching, you know, listening to all the, uh, people come up and voice their opinion about mandates, vaccines, and whatnot. And most of you were sitting there and respectfully listening. And one of you, um, uh, Ms. Weisberg, actually, um, was very animated. And it wasn't in a very nice way. And I, when I, when it would be my turn to come up, I was going to mention it, but someone else had before me. And she kind of said, no, you know, and we all started pointing that yes, because we have eyes and we see. And in your words, you had said, um, in your response, being elected doesn't stop us from being human beings. But I feel it should, it should make us more mature. Um, you know, don't, uh, there's never a place for disrespect of anyone, whether you're sitting here or speaking to you. There's no, there's no need for that. So I just would like to state that. You know, whether, you know, you believe in what someone has to say or not. I mean, this is the best way to handle it. You, you voice your opinion. Everyone's opinion counts, whether you like it or not. And this is still a free country, so we should voice our opinion. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Henry, and we have since received a couple more cards. So, uh, following Ms. Henry will be Linda Bito.
Thank you. My name is-
Apologize, Mr. Henry.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Tracy Henry. I've been employed by the Burbank Unified School District for the past fourteen years in a variety of positions. I've been a substitute teacher. I've been a reading interventionist, an instrumental music coach, and an interim band director. Right now, I'm the jazz band director at Burbank High School, which is my dream job. But sadly, tomorrow will be my last day in a BUSD classroom. The district is placing me on unpaid leave through the end of the school year. The district claims that this is the only reasonable accommodation they can make for me in light of my religious exemption from their new mandatory COVID inoculation policy. Although they had originally stated that other options would be entertained, such as weekly or twice-weekly testing, they have since changed their minds. I've never spoken at a school board meeting before. However, I felt it important to speak at tonight's meeting. I wanted to make sure all those wonderful and dedicated BUSD employees who are being treated as I am are represented in some small way tonight. I'm here to speak out for all those qualified and experienced teachers and staff who have either resigned or taken early retirement as a result of the district's new policy. We had already lost many effective and experienced teachers during the lockdown. Now the district will lose still more teachers and staff, all because those individuals refuse to violate their personal or religious conscience. Faced with the choice between receiving the inoculation or losing their jobs, some teachers and staff were effectively coerced into violating their deeply-held religious beliefs in order to keep their homes and feed their families. I wanted to be sure those teachers and staff were represented here tonight as well. In my opinion, what has been done, done to them is unforgivable. There are also those of us who've been mistreated in a thousand small ways, such as being scoffed at for having any religious belief at all, or being verbally brow-beaten for not having the correct opinion, or simply being ostracized in social settings for the crime of making a personal medical decision. I wanted those folks to have a voice here tonight, too. I also wanted to show my support for the awesome parents in this district. Those parents will soon be faced with a choice similar to the one forced upon so many employees of the district. Inoculate your child, possibly against your will, or in some way be disallowed from public education. I know from many different conversations with parents that they think they don't have a say in this matter. Some parents, particularly those who have immigrated from another country, have told me they're afraid to speak up, either because of their immigration status or because they're unaccustomed to the type of civil discourse we practice here in the U.S. Others just think the board won't listen because they haven't in the past, so what's the point? But I'm here to tell you, parents, that the parents do have a voice, and I encourage them to use it. This is a public school district, and guess what? The parents are the public. They can demand satisfaction. If they don't get it, they still have options. In addition to school board elections and outright litigation, they can pull their kids out of public school. They can homeschool their kids. And if that's something that's difficult for them because of their work schedule or any other considerations, they shouldn't despair because as luck would have it, there are now quite a few dedicated, experienced, and highly motivated teachers willing to work with them to set up learning pods and opportunities for instruction for their children. So I hope they stand up for themselves. I hope they stand up for their rights because those rights do not come from this school board. I will close by saying that my life has been greatly enriched by my time here in the BUSD. I'm a better teacher as a result. I've made many friendships with faculty, staff, and parents along the way, and I cherish them all. But most of all, I'll miss the students. I've been here long enough that I'm teaching kids at Burbank High right now that I've known since they were in kindergarten. That is an absolute blessing. I hope my efforts here these past fourteen years have helped the young people of this community in some small way. If so, it will all have been worthwhile. I will wrap up by saying this. May the Lord bless and keep us all, and may he forgive us for our shameful treatment of one another during this already difficult time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Bito, followed by Sheridan Thompson.
Hello again. At no time in history have people forcing other people into compliance been the good guys. I'm doubling down on my statement that your vax mandate is a slippery slope following the footstep of what happened in Europe in the thirties and forties based on mandates established by Hitler. I'm not insulting or spitting on anyone's grave, quite the opposite. I'm speaking up for the honor of millions and millions of people, murdered, lost souls. I'm speaking out now as they would have wished someone would have spoken out for them so much longer ago. Before these beautiful lost souls were marched to the forest, forced to dig their own graves, and shot. Before these lost souls were hung in the town squares for not complying to mandates. Before these lost souls were forced into cattle cars and then into the crematories. Each one of these murdered poor souls had their livelihoods ripped from them. Can you imagine how different Europe would have been if people like me and these good people behind me stood up for them? Every World War II book I've read, every documentary I've watched, every survivor I've listened to have all said the same thing. How could this have happened? How could people do this to other people? Why didn't they stand up for us? You as board members have the ability to stop this ma- vax mandate, or at least postpone this mandate until further research has been completed. You have the ability to put this issue back on the table to revote. If you do nothing and let this mandate stand as it is, you are complicit in destroying the livelihoods of many hard-working, dedicated people right here. Just like what happened eighty years ago in the cities, towns, and villages in Europe. The city officials, the board members, and the government leaders were complicit in destroying the livelihoods and subsequently the lives of millions of lost souls. You are no different. You're complicit. You may or may not know, the U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland announced that he was mobilizing the FBI and the U.S. Attorneys to investigate and prosecute parents who protested public school boards over the mask and COVID mandates. Coincidentally, eighty years ago, Hitler ordered his SS to investigate and prosecute non-compliant citizens, and you saw where that went. You cannot hide behind. It is for the safety of our students and staff. If it was about the safety of our students and staff, you would have placed just as many posters that said, eat healthy, maintain a healthy weight, boost your immune system, along with all the posters that say, wear your mask. It's well-known fact that persons with compromised immune systems, overweight persons with associated health issues, are the vast majority of people dying from this flu. Fully vaccinated people can get COVID. Fully vaccinated people are now the super-spreaders of COVID. Why are they not losing their jobs? Congress, congressional staff, the White House staff, CDC employees, FDA employees, UPS, USPS employees, Pfizer employers, Moderna employees, illegal aliens, they all have in common, they are not required to take this. Why are we? Why would you set a mandate in the middle of a semester? At least you can postpone it to the end of the semester. You're going to destroy these kids that already have these teachers for this long. Now you're pulling those teachers out. What are those kids going to do? We can't even find the substitutes now for our teachers. You're creating chaos in the offices where dedicated staff members have been forced out of their jobs, resulting in less service to our families and our students. Statistics show we are not a danger to our students and coworkers. You have the ability to at very least postpone this mandate. This very night, this very night, you guys can put this back in and save these livelihoods and maintain an educational flow for our students and families. It has been said that evil triumphs when good men do nothing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sheridan Thompson, and at the moment, that is the, again, the last card I have. If anyone wants to turn a card, please do so now, because I will be calling an end to public comment. Ms. Thompson.
Hi, my name is Sheridan Thompson. Um, good evening, board members and Matt Hill. Thank you for your time. I am a third-generation graduate from Burrows. My sister just graduated from there this last year and has started her first year in college. We have always grown up in this beautiful town. What you guys are doing to the staff and kids is undeniably against the Constitution and morally wrong. To force someone twelve and older to get an experimental drug, otherwise not be able to attend school or keep their jobs, is ridiculous. You keep saying it's for our kids and for our safety. You act like you care about the kids, but you don't. When my sister had her senior year online away from all of her friends, I saw the negative effects it had on her. She is already quite introverted, and you can tell that her being pushed away from society dug her into a deep depression. Did you care for the students then? Nope. No one asked if they were okay. They were left to struggle and deal with it on their own. You can say sources were made available, but just giving someone a room to cry in, a hotline number to call, or maybe an adult to speak to, doesn't do anything for a teenager. They respond well with actions rather than words. This negatively affected the students, and right when they are starting to get back to normal, you are ripping that away. Now, let's talk about forcing the staff to get the vaccine or be put on an unpaid leave. How have they been able to work this whole time, yet October twenty-second comes along and magically they are a threat if they are not vaccinated? You are pushing a communist agenda, and you clearly don't care about anyone but yourselves. You are taking education away from the students when their favorite teacher can't see their students because of their vaccination status, as well as the shortage of teachers and staff, which means you'll either have to double up on classrooms or get substitutes. Now the kids aren't going to get the full attention and education they deserve. You are also taking away income from hundreds of families. What about the children whose parents are on staff who are unvaccinated? Now they will have more stress because their parent just lost their job. What you're doing to families is disgusting and ruining the image of this great town. I used to be proud of being a Burrows graduate, and now I'm embarrassed on your behavior and treatments of others. Shame on you for acting like you're listening to everyone at these meetings because in the end, you're just going to end up pushing your beliefs on everyone. The BUSD official page on Facebook posted this week that they're hiring, so you clearly don't listen to anything anyone is saying. You've already made up your mind, and you're expecting a big number of staff to be put on this unpaid leave. An unpaid leave for a medical exemption or religious exemption is not an accommodation. How would you like to have your salary taken away because of your beliefs or medical reasoning? I bet you wouldn't. Lastly, I would like to add the definition of freedom. Is the power or right to act, speak, or think as one wants without hindrance or restraint? Is the power or right to act, speak, or think as one wants without hindrance or restraint? So yeah, when it comes to requiring this unapproved vaccine, because no, it is not yet FDA-approved, the trial was approved, and the vaccine they are giving out is not the approved one, you can check the CDC official website as a source for that. It is against a freedom. My great-grandpa fought for this country so we could have our freedom. My freedom or anyone else's freedom does not get to be decided by you. If you have a problem with unvaccinated people, maybe you guys should just be the ones staying home. Just because you are vaccinated does not mean that you can't catch COVID because vaccinated people are catching COVID still. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lauren Weigel, and that is the last card I have.
Thank you for allowing me to be here again and to keep asking questions. I feel like there's been so much to learn and so much more, board members, administrative staff. So I looked up the COVID budget, didn't have time to look up last time, and I found it. So I was just wondering if there's a way for you to at least generally comment on the funds that have been spent up to this point. There's, the category is Corona Relief Fund for the fund, $6 million plus on 531, and the Prop 98 General Fund spent on 630 of $1 million and 1. You have the numbers, you know what they are. I'm sure you would have to look them up, but it would just be helpful for me to understand what specifically they're being spent on. And it says here, "The funds can also be used for current expenditures of staff who are being utilized not only for learning loss interventions, but for those who are being used for a substantially different use due to the pandemic. Subsequently, using these restricted funds in lieu of unrestricted general funds provides relief of general fund expenditures where personnel, materials, supplies, and services were charged." This relief is detailed in the Expenditure Changes section. So I don't read budgets really well, so it'd be helpful for me to understand what all that is here after that paragraph, if just from a general standpoint or maybe more detailed in an email. But it would be nice to have at least a general idea tonight. And then the ESER Plan that's on the agenda tonight, 13F I believe it is, ESER 3 Plan, it would just be helpful to understand if there's any, it seems like it's connected to the COVID funds, it's emergency relief, but I don't quite understand that. And then my third question is a follow-up on last week. I asked about where we can amend the resolution that we amended to add boosters. It would be helpful to understand how resolutions are amended, if that occurred between when it was adopted after public comment, and then how that's done and if it can be amended further and how that would be done. Thank you.
That was our last card. I will ask one last time if there's anyone else who would like to turn one in. Otherwise, we will close public comment. And before we move on to responses, we will have to move to Item 12A, a public hearing. We are supposed to have it as closely as possible to 7:30 in last meeting. We did it at about 11 o'clock at night, so. 12A is the public hearing of the District's 2021-2022 Initial Bargaining Proposal to the Burbank Teachers Association. The Board of Education will hold a public hearing to allow public comment regarding the District's 2021-2022 Initial Bargaining Proposal to the Burbank Teachers Association as presented. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment regarding the BTA hearing? Mr. Schlossman?
Yeah, you know--
And just to clarify, any comments have to be in regards to this subject during this public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Fritner. You know, I think that the board has done a very poor job educating the public on how teachers and employees are paid. You promised you'd talk to us about it during the parcel tax and you never did. And whatever an employee makes, and I've got the printout, I requested it, and I know what everybody makes, of course, my list is a couple of years old now, but you'd never include the 20% CalPERS contribution. So if you've got an employee, I think Ms. Cook that told us your average teacher's making $86,000, but that doesn't include the 20%.
This is kind of moving off the, it's targeted specifically towards the proposal. I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm just saying that the public hearings are, any comments have to be directly towards the proposal.
Just talking about teacher salary negotiations and the poor job you folks do of educating the public of how salaries work, you know, that's all.
Okay.
Just general, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to comment during the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing, and now we will move back to 10B, whoops, sorry, 10B, which is Staff Responses. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Fritner, and thank you to all the public speakers this evening. First up, Mr. Schlossman, you asked about a hotline. We do have a WeTip hotline that employees and students may use. You can use the website, or the hotline number is 1-800-873-7283. You can report anything in the district, including vandalism. Our schools do have cameras. We have limited funding, as you well know, to upgrade cameras, but we have upgraded some cameras at Burbank High. We're looking to do it at other school sites when funding is available. And you're absolutely correct, we do not condone violence. I know you do. In your comments, you say that, but if students engage in physical violence, both individuals will have precautions. We do not believe in violence on campuses, so I just want to clarify that. Ms. Lau, Ms. Sarrio, and Ms. Thompson, and your children, thank you for coming down tonight to support the cause around sustainability and establish a sustainability committee. I know we have a meeting scheduled, so I look forward to hearing more about the work you've been doing and talking about next steps. Mr. Waddell, he had to leave, but I know Dr. Chambers has been investigating the situation. It is a personnel matter, so I can't talk about it in this forum, but Dr. Paramo will follow up as well as Dr. Chambers to make sure that the investigation is continuing and we'll discuss next steps on that. For the other speakers, it's really around vaccines. I do want to make one comment for our students. One of the public speakers talked about as they get older, they learn to listen better and reflect. I get told a lot, and I want to share this with our student board members, that I'm too young to be reflective, I'm not wise yet. It's something I've been told my whole life, so I just want to share with our student board members since they're here and we have students watching, that at any moment in our lives, we can learn to be active listeners, we can engage in productive dialogue. And so when people use ageism and throw that at us, it's okay to say like, no, I'm willing to learn and grow at a young age as well. So it's just something I wanted to share with our students. But for our comments tonight on the vaccine, I'm not going to go details. You can review previous meetings, but first of all, I do want to talk about what Mr. Henry talked about. We have outstanding employees in this district that have served this district so well and have had a tremendous impact on students, and we still have outstanding employees. We are at a pivotal moment in the middle of pandemic where we've made a decision as an organization, what is the best safety measures we can put in place? And so we've made that decision as a school district, as an employer, and employees now must make the decision as that condition of employment, do I want to stay, remain employed in this district? And I know it's a difficult decision. I completely agree with you. People should not be on one side versus the other on this. They should not be disrespected for the service of the district, disrespected as individuals. So I encourage all of us because we have that deadline tomorrow, that we've got to focus on humanity, focus on the community, focus on next steps. Individuals are making personal decisions about their employment decision. So I want to echo that. I firmly believe that, and I know it's been challenging. I do want to give some updates about statistics. So the deadline's tomorrow, so individuals have somewhat, a little bit of time to make their final decision, but as of right now, 99% of our certificated employees, mostly our teachers, our nurses, other support staff, 99% are vaccinated. And then for our classified custodians, office managers, 96%. So overall, 97% of our employees. So that relates to 43 employees right now that are not, are unvaccinated, and so we're working with that. So as far as parents watching tonight, you may have heard some public comments, you're worried about staffing shortages. Yes, we have been posting for substitutes and other employees because we wanted to be prepared if people chose not to continue to work for us as a district or choose to take a leave. So we are working to hire additional staff to make sure that on Monday, schools will continue. There will be some transitions. We don't want to lose one employee, but we don't want one employee to have to take leave. But again, those are personal decisions that individuals must make. As an organization, we must make decisions to make sure we have staff to support our students and our other employees. So we have plans in place, we're ready to transition if need be. It is difficult, I don't want to understate that, but we are ready to continue to serve our community and our schools on Monday. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I forgot. Sorry, Ms. Weigel, you had some specific questions, I want to make sure that I address those too. With the COVID funding, your second question about ESER 3, that is part of the federal, so they had ESER 1, 2, and 3. There's, I'm thinking about the three other acronyms, GEAR. So there's a lot of different parts of the COVID funding, but some of the specifics you're asking, protective equipment, viewing our air conditioning units and upgrading those, supporting hiring additional nurses, supporting existing nurses, some of the testing. We've been focused on some class size reduction this year to have some physical distancing, the expanded summer school program that we put in our schools, purchasing software for student assessments to see where they've gained in academics, where they've lost, putting in, we call it response intervention in math and English and other subject areas to help students build on what they learned last year but also recover what they may have not mastered last year. Our mental health, we've expanded those resources. So that's some of the examples of how we're using that, and you hear some more examples when we do the ESER 3 updates, very similar categories. And the final one was around, how do you amend a board resolution? So when the board gets to that agenda item, they may make amendments, and if the board agrees in a three, two, or more votes, then they make the amendment at the board meeting at that time, and that's what happened to the resolution. If they want to make amendment afterwards, they have to agendize that and bring the whole item back for a change. So I just want to make sure I clarified those, or answered those three questions. Thank you, President Fritner.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We'll move on to board members' comments and responses. We'll start with Dr. Weisberg.
So, Dr. Emily Weisberg, she, her, hers. Before I begin my comments, I just want to acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernandoño, Tatavaim, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. I also want to acknowledge today is Spirit Day. I wanted to read something very quickly about it. LGBTQ+ youth disproportionately face bullying and harassment because of their identities. Each year, millions go purple for Spirit Day, which is today, to support LGBTQ+ youth in a united stand against bullying. Pledging to go purple on Spirit Day is a way for everyone, global and local brands and companies, world leaders, celebrities, neighbors, parents, classmates, and friends, to visibly show solidarity with youth and to take part in the largest, most visible LGBTQ+ anti-bullying campaign in the world. So that was today, and also acknowledge that it is Filipino-American Heritage Month. Thank you to everybody from the Eco Council for coming to speak. I know that we're excited to learn more and figure out ways we can partner. I'm excited to hear what happens, comes out of the meeting with Dr. Hill. I also wanted to thank Disney for sharing their amazing student newsletter. It's phenomenal. I love it, and I'm glad we're getting, it's shared with us every week, or however much, when, they put it, is it monthly, weekly? Whatever it is, it's awesome and it made me happy. Just a couple of comments in regards to the speakers. Mr. Sinavoy, just wanted to clarify, no one is against Martin Luther King Jr. I think we can all agree that he is an icon, a hero, somebody who blazed trails, and still in many ways continues to do so through his work. I think my, I can only speak for myself, my issue was conflating Dr. King's struggle against systemic racism with people's refusal to do what's necessary to keep people safe. So my frustration wasn't that you referenced Dr. King, it would never be. My frustration is that I don't think that the comparison between the fight for civil rights is comparable to Dr. King's struggle. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't think, I can only speak for myself. I was in no way unhappy that you brought Dr. King up. I did have issue with the comparison. To Ms. Sinavoy, I'll say again what I said last time. I was animated. When people make comparisons to the Holocaust, I am going to be animated. As somebody who lost family in the Holocaust, when people continuously drag up this very dangerous comparison between people being slaughtered for their religion, their sexual identity, their political beliefs, and compare that to somebody not choosing to get vaccinated, I'm going to respond as a Jewish person, as a human being, because that's, I think, what many people would do. So you may see it as rude, that's well within your right to do so, but I think it is, the word unfair is not the word, I can't think of the word right now, but to hurl those kind of, that kind of language at people and expect them to sit tacitly by and smile and nod. I'm not wired that way. That's just not who I am. So when people came up and spoke respectfully and didn't draw those comparisons, I responded from that place. And when people made references to the Holocaust and tried to make it comparable to us asking people to make a decision to keep people safe, you're absolutely right. I did viscerally respond. So that's true. I will continue to do so because I feel like that is an appropriate response. Respect begets respect. But I appreciate your comments as well. You know, none of this is about voicing opinions. We all sit up here and we listen to hours sometimes, as with last meeting, of opinion that often verges on a personal attack of people sitting up here, and we do it, and we try to do it with respect and composure, but sometimes hour three of it, it gets hard, especially when those attacks are specious and they are, opposed to what Ms. Bittow says, they are spitting on the graves of people murdered for things they could not control. I want to caution people that when they make those comparisons, those historical comparisons, they are dangerous and they perpetuate false information and false narratives. I thank everybody who spoke tonight. Thank you, Mr. Waddell. I look forward to hearing updates from Dr. Paramo and Dr. Chambers on that. I know we all want all of our students to feel supported, no matter what they're doing on our campuses. And lastly, I will say to echo what Dr. Hill said, this is a difficult process for everybody. Nobody wants to see people leave. The October 22 deadline isn't a surprise, it's been there for a while. People knew that it was coming. I know that our district staff have been working literally day and night to accommodate, to listen, to try to be human and humane in the way that we're doing this, but foundationally, it is our job to make sure that everybody is as safe and as supported as humanly possible. And it is well within your rights to make the personal choice to not be vaccinated, but that choice has consequences. They're not enjoyable, nobody likes making them, but I know that at the end of the day, after tomorrow, that our schools will be safer places.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Dr. Roderick Condon?
Thank you. I do also want to thank all of our speakers. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Karen Lau and all the students and the parents who came forward. I am glad that the meeting is moving forward, that conversations about this, and I think it is time for us to create a committee in our district addressing these issues when it comes to our environment. I know I've been talking to them and also been involved with the parents and the groups. So I'm very excited about this, and I think this will also help us move forward when we talk about things like having sustainable gardens in our schools and eventually create a program where we can actually have our students not only grow their own food but also learn how to do business and even sell them at the farmer's market, create a self-sustained system. And I did this at a university with a biodiesel project, and it worked and still works. So thank you for coming forward. It is time to address this issue and bring it forward, and I'm looking forward to not only, you know, the meeting with the superintendent, but also the creation of this committee. Other than that, I also want to, again-- Other than that, I also want to, again, thank all of the speakers. It is a difficult decision or decisions that, you know, that, you know, we have to make. But at the same time, I want to let you know that your opinion does matter. I listen to all of you, and I understand it. It's difficult. But at the same time, as I've said it before, the safety of our children and students is our top priority in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aragón. Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, President Fritner. And to everybody who came down and spoke at public comment tonight. First, on the ECO Council front, I hear the support from my colleague. We've had kind of early conversations when I started on the board, when we both started on the board, around gardens and the sustainability around that. We've also talked about the use of water, you name it, reclaimed water on our school sites, things like that. We have made pretty significant, also the Measure S bond puts literally solar panels in our play yards across this district. So I completely think, you know, where we can be sustainable is critically important. But I'm also managing for the fact that we are about to lose another 40 some odd employees. And we are, like everybody else, struggling with shortages and capacity. So I do want to give the superintendent space to have the conversation, discuss where we're at, and really assess if we can tackle that in terms of priorities and bandwidth. So my feedback is just about maintaining bandwidth as we need to remain flexible for all the different components that we are responding to in very real time. So that's just my two cents on that front. To Ms. Weigel, I hope that we can continue to answer your questions, that those answered your questions, or we can get you additional information, especially around how the funding is done. As the superintendent said, at times, it's highly technical. Having said that, it is important for those who are asking that we are able to spell it out very clearly where this money went. It was a lot of money. It's discussed, obviously, in all the major news media, you name it. So for us to be able to answer those questions is our role. So let's continue to answer them where there are holes in information that you might have. To all of our employees, well, first, first to the Sinavoy's, thank you for coming down again. You know, last meeting was a tough meeting. To come back to another meeting, right? You're still here. Thank you. So I appreciate that. I think the real challenge becomes, we can get into the back and forth, and fundamentally, it comes down to, if we disagree, that doesn't mean I didn't hear things. It just meant I reached different conclusions along the way. I understand where you're coming from, where your concern is, and I think your comments around compassion, right, were important ones, as we are, as I said last meeting, all neighbors, right, that see each other in the grocery store. I can make an argument personally where I believe we have been compassionate, right? We have 1,600 employees, 1,700 employees that we have to work through to make sure we are creating safe environments on school sites. I believe vaccination requirements are a part of that. That's why I voted the way I did. But the next population to focus on, generally, if you believe in vaccinations as a means to respond to this, which I do, is the student population. That is 15,000 in nature. So it took 60 days and an ungodly amount of resourcing to get this component through. So we don't continue to have, frankly, outbreaks on campus that get blamed on school site staff. That's not okay. These are folks trying to come to work every day, just like you're saying, right, that we shouldn't demonize. Well, outbreaks still haven't, but we are now able to say to folks, we have taken every measure we can with our employees to ensure safety as of tomorrow. To those we are losing, I hate this, okay? I say the "we are a family" thing, and I get the eye rolls. I get it. But it really, like, Linda, I've known you for years. We're not going to be the same without you or any employee that we're losing. But in the job that I have to put what I believe is the mission above those moments, I believe that I'm standing in the right moment here. And I hate that we're losing anybody. And to anybody who we are losing, who has served this district for years, I cannot thank you enough for making a difference in the lives of kids. But today, I believe, as an elected member, and again, I can lose the next election, you can, there are remedies for you as members of the public to hold me to account, and I fully own that. But I do believe that this is a new standard to work with our kids. I understand if there are disagreements about that. But as the person, as one person elected out of a group of five, I'm doing my best within that to keep my core mission of keeping people safe. So to all those who served and who are losing as a result of choices tomorrow, I cannot thank you enough for your service to our community and to our kids. I'm sorry you won't be a part of the future. I wish you could have been there. I want to take a moment also to thank Councilmember Nick Schultz, who, after weeks of work, was able to secure an employee mandate on the city side of things. I cannot express how big this is. I understand there's still bargaining groups to work with. I understand all of that. But in a city where we are almost completely, you know, we are around 80% vaccinated, having a few hundred employees here or there is literally a percentage that we could move the ball. We could get to 85. We can get to 90. We can stop shutting down schools, right? We can get to a healthier place when we work together. So I understand this is a difference in philosophy, but to Councilmember Schultz and to the council majority that supported that, thank you for being courageous. To those who couldn't make that, and to those leaders, frankly, who, I'm sorry, gave false information out during the process of the conversation. I believe you need to do your research better. And again, happy to engage in those conversations, but I have young women on these school sites who are concerned about reproductive issues as a result of commentary from elected officials. And that's wrong. So everybody has a right to advocate. Everybody has a right to say their views. But to definitively say that it does cause issues frightens a lot. And I realize I may represent that fear to other people on the other side. But again, just want to say thank you to our city partners for stepping up. And hopefully, we can look to the holidays and then look to the beginning of the new year for a new chapter in this horrible, horrible pandemic that nobody signed up for. So again, thank you to all those who took time to weigh in. And also thank you to our administrative team and our HTR team, who went through countless hours of meetings, who took on the variety of scenarios and situations that people have impacting their lives and did their best to walk through to find accommodations where those applied. Thank you. Again, lots of work, but this is also the first step of stepping out of this hole and getting back to what is our new normal, which will require enough energy, time, and resourcing over the next year to clean up in its own right, without us having to worry about whether or not we're shutting down schools or classrooms or quarantining children. We're getting back to the business of educating kids. And that needs to be our mission first and foremost, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Ms. Tebbit.
Well, thank you to all the speakers who came out this evening. Especially, I was, and we do, we do listen. And I think that sometimes people might get confused that if you don't agree with their thoughts or ideas, that you're not listening. And that's not the case. And I really wanted to say that to Ms. Sheridan Thompson, that so many of the things that we did last year, that she brought up, that she felt were harmful to students or families, were actually put in place like distance learning for the safety of our students and staff, so that learning could continue in a safe way. So I want to make sure, because, you know, as you just said, Mr. Ferguson, that, you know, some little research and thought needs to be put in behind words that are spoken, especially in a public place, because they can, at times, come back. And I want her to be careful about how she says things and what she says. To say that we're pushing a communist agenda and only care about ourselves was kind of hurtful. So I wanted to really talk to her about her thoughts and ideas. Maybe she'll contact me after she hears this. Let's hope so. Mr. Schlossman, I, my habit is to, as you're speaking, to write down some of your thoughts and ideas, so I can, not just you, but every speaker, to say something, to say something back. There's some really good conversations going on within district staff and within the outside group on driving habits and speeding, and especially around our schools. And I'm hoping that you'll appreciate some things that are coming down the pike in the next year or so. Things take times to happen, but there's really good work and conversation happening in those areas. I don't necessarily agree with your thought about getting the names of students, but I'll certainly throw that out there and see what the folks in the committee think. And you know, it's funny, when I was a middle school teacher, 10 years or so ago, 12 years ago, seems like a lifetime, but the kids and I used to have conversations all the time about self-defense and what is self-defense. And I think, and my point of view, that if Dr. Weisberg hits me, that's what you would, but self-defense is not hitting her now. That's a separate action. I would try to explain that. That's my thoughts. It's two violent actions that happen. Self-defense, in my thought, is, you know, putting up your hands, running away, telling an adult, something along those lines. So I would never define self-defense as hitting someone else, because that's just another violent action. And I know that's the way our schools think and our admin as well. So just a good definition of the thoughts of self-defense maybe need to come into play. I'm going to go in a different direction as taking a lead from our good friend, Dr. Reynolds, was very, very adept at making sure that the community was reminded of all the wonderful things going on in our world, in our school district world especially. Most of us attended last weekend the BAEF Impact Event, which, you know, was outstanding. They hit their fundraising goal. I have a new TV. It's all good. So thank you to them for the work they put in. And I'm looking forward to see how that event and money they raise comes back to our schools. It'll be great. Coming up, you know, there's lots, because of the work that we've done, we're able to have in-person productions and shows. And so we have two coming up. One at Burbank High, started last weekend and continues on this weekend, the Drama Department. There is putting on The Wizard of Oz. I'm hoping to go to one of the three performances this weekend. It's this Friday night at 7:00, and Saturday, there's two performances at 1:00 and 5:00. I've watched the kids while I'm at Burbank High occasionally, working on the sets, and I saw the whole production company in costume, pre-show, and it looks to be outstanding. I've heard nothing but good things. So check that out. Also this weekend, on the other side of town, at Burrows, is Burrows on Broadway, which is the show choir's fabulous fundraiser of the choirs and individual kids singing the show, Broadway show tunes. So that's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then we have another wonderful organization in town, the Burbank Coordinating Council, which puts one of the, I mean, they do, they send kids to camp in the summer. They have a holiday basket program that's their big focus coming up, where they provide holiday treats, food, an abundance of things for families in need. And they're having their gala on November 6 at UME in the parking lot. Oh, and by the way, except for Wizard of Oz, the Burrows on Broadway is also in their quad, so it's outside. Yes, pretty exciting. And the gala for Burbank Coordinating Council will also be in the parking lot, a UME outside. So like we were Friday night, you can take off your masks if you so choose, because we're outdoors and we're, most of us are vaccinated and et cetera. So I hope that those of you that are listening will check out one of those events and support the organizations that are either part of our district or support us. Greatly appreciated. I'm sure there's lots more happening, but those are the most upcoming, and we should all take a break and enjoy them. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you to all of our speakers for coming out. And I know, I've said before, whether you believe the, you know, the words are not, we are happy to have people come out and speak and express their opinions to us, even when they are not necessarily what, you know, we agree with, and, you know, even if it's not necessarily something that's complimentary. But in fact, most of them aren't. But we're happy to hear what people have to say. I know Ms. Lau and the group with the ECO Council have left, but thank you for coming out. We do have to think of the future of what our children are going to be facing. I look forward to seeing how the meeting goes with the superintendent. I will say, and Mr. Ferguson kind of pointed out, we've got a lot of things that we are, you know, interested in and really want to advance, you know, through district initiatives. But we also have a lot on our plate already. And, you know, and trying to keep all the balls, you know, in the air is not always easy. But having said that, I certainly think climate change is real and it's not going away. And it's something, as Ms. Ferguson pointed out, we've done a lot in the district in the last several years with, you know, the recycled water, the, you know, the solar panels.
Former board.
We've tried doing some composting, you know, with the lunch disposables. That doesn't mean you can't do more. I think we all, as you mentioned, we try and recycle, we use reusable bags, you know, there are little things, but there's always more you can do. Hopefully, if everyone does a little bit, it can move it forward. So thank you for coming out tonight. Mr. Waddell, I know he also had to leave. Thank you for, I know this is not an easy subject to discuss, and I won't get into it, because as the superintendent pointed out, this is a personnel matter. And I'm sure Dr. Chambers and, if needed, Dr. Paramo will continue to, you know, investigate the matter. We do care about our students, especially in extracurricular activities, to make sure that they are, it should be a good experience. And hopefully, we can make this a good experience again. Mr. Schlossman, a couple of things. The penalizing students on campus for things that happened off campus. There was a Supreme Court ruling earlier this year where a student who had tweeted something or something on social media, Snapchat, critical of the district, and the district suspended that student. The Supreme Court- The Supreme Court said the district was wrong. And so anything we, you know, would attempt to, I don't necessarily, I, I know it sounds like a great, I, you know, you know, they should be held a bit responsible. And I'm totally, anyone's whose drag racing needs to be held responsible for what they're doing wrong. But trying to man, you know, bring it in that we should be penalizing them within our boundaries for something that's happened outside of our boundaries, legally is going to be a very difficult thing to try and enforce, you know, based on what the Supreme Court has just said recently. As far as the vandalism, again, I, we, you know, we have tried, you know, our, our staffs in the schools, especially the secondary schools, are working hard to try and, you know, watch for this. We, TikTok certainly isn't helping us, you know, when they are, almost seem to be encouraging young people to do this. I was very concerned, as you obviously were, when they were advocating possibly attacking staff. And that wouldn't, I, I'm not aware of anything that happened in any of our district schools. That wouldn't, we wouldn't stand for it if it were to happen. As far as advocating violence, I, I have a real problem with that. I don't think anyone who's being beaten up and bullied, yes, should be protected. And we will do our best to try and make sure that doesn't happen. I believe violence begets more violence. And I, and encouraging people to just start brawling isn't going to solve the problem. So. The rest of the speakers, you know, again, we're discussing either the, you know, the masking or the mandates. The one thing I will say, and I'm echoing again what the superintendent and some of my colleagues have already said. Anytime we have had to go through a period where we might have to lose employees, we've had layoffs in the past, you know, cutbacks. It is always an incredible, incredibly difficult thing to do. This is, we know how important our employees are and how, how, how good a job they have done. This isn't about performance, you know, about job performance. You know, a number of people had said they were doing great today, tomorrow they're suddenly not. No, because it's not about job performance. It is about trying to create the safest environment we can for our staff and our students. And right now, based on what we've seen, and I know everyone doesn't agree, and there's people who think that there are other, you know, other science that, that, you know, doesn't agree with that. But we are trying to create as safe an environment as we can. That's what this is about. Not about, we think you're, you know, these people are not doing their job. We know they are. That's why this is a difficult time for us. And I know it's difficult choices. I've had to make that choice myself. My company, the company I work for has a mandate. I, I don't even, I'm still working remotely. Even people working remotely, they have mandated you have to be vaccinated or you will be let go. So even if you're working from home, they have, they have said you have to be mandated, you know, you have to be vaccinated. So it's not an easy choice. And, and I'm, for those who have, you know, made the choice, I'm sorry you won't be on our campuses, at least in the immediate future. But this is not something we take lightly. Ms. Habbert mentioned almost every item that I had made notes about, which is good because that means they are, you know, being reflected. And we'd already talked about the BAEF Impact Event earlier when they presented Burrows on Broadway and Wizard of Oz, fantastic. The Night of Magic is a fundraiser for the Burbank High vocal, vocal program, that vocal music program, which is coming up October 30th. So there's tickets available for that. Couple of things, and, and again, the Core Day Council Gala, November 6th. BurbankCC.org, you can buy tickets on their website. A great organization that we have been proud to partner with for years in the holiday basket program as well as other programs. Doing this a little differently, and they are, as they have transitioned to a new board, they're doing, they're trying to kind of expand their footprint. So it'd be great to see people support that. A couple of things that I, I wanted to mention on this past Tuesday night. We had a parent and student information night webinar on how trauma impacts behavior. I tuned in for, they had an hour for elementary parents and students and an hour for the secondary. And I joined the, the first hour. I thought it was great, a lot of great information. Stacy Cashman, our Director of Student Services, led it with, along with some people from Laco. And it was recorded. So I'm not sure where it's available, but I think that is, either is available or is going to be available. Is that correct? I think they said during the, you know, the recording, it would be.
I'll just need to find out where it's going to be posted.
Okay. But yeah, a lot of great information on that. So if you'd like to see that, we'll, we'll find out and make sure it's posted. And the other thing, I always like to recognize our employees. We were at the State of the City luncheon yesterday. And as part of their presentation on many great things around the city, they talked about Mr. Guy Myers and the Dramatic Arts Program at Burrows. Mr. Myers, of course, was our district teacher of the year two years ago, was the LA County Teacher of the Year, and was one of the five state teachers of the year. So very proud of him and, and I'm glad to see that recognition for him as well. Okay, so we will move on to, we've done, oh, we're on 11A Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you, President Fritner. Just to follow up on that last comment. So on the district's website, if you go to Departments, Student Services, on the left-hand side, there's PBIS, and you can find the videos from our, our sessions. We are working with the Los Angeles County Office of Education to have teams focused on positive behavior intervention supports as well as trauma and healing practices. So you can hear more about that. My, my other comments this evening, I addressed in response to public comments. So I will end my comments there. I just, I haven't looked yet. Can I get a score update for many? 11-2 Dodgers, okay.
There we go.
I want to go on the record, this is the third time I've worn this suit in the postseason. They won every time, so I'm gonna have to wear it Saturday and Sunday.
Proof or it didn't happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Hill. We'll move on to 11B, the report on the Burbank Unified School District School Satisfaction Survey for Spring 2021. Ms. Casao.
Good evening, President Fritner, members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, and members of the Burbank community. This is the School Satisfaction Survey, which is a yearly survey that we give to our parents, students, staff, and community members. One moment while we're getting the slides up. One thing I can tell you about the survey is that there wasn't great change from year to year, but I did want to highlight some of the changes that we did have. Thank you. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to highlight is that we did have an increase in the number of participants. And in particular, it was the, the total you can see was 3,100 this year. This, well, this survey was actually from spring of 2021, so this past spring. So that was a good jump. And then in the area of teaching and learning, the first bolded number is the current survey results compared to the prior two years. So you can see that the two highlighted areas in teaching and learning is the satisfaction with what our offerings are. So offering a curriculum that appropriately challenges students. The students had rated that higher for our survey, which was good. And then offers a wide variety of classes to keep students engaged went down a little bit for the parents. So, and I think that might be a reflection too of distance learning and having to, you know, deal with a different curriculum. School safety, so the change, so for students, it was pretty much the same, but you can see there was a little bit of a decline there, actually a significant decline of 13% for parents when it says, my child's, my child knows what to do in the event of a crisis. That went from 88 to 75. And then my school provides clear information on emergency procedures. That went from, is now 75 and it was 68. So we have some growth there, but some definite changes to look at. That's all right. You may.
What's interesting also is that the student number actually doesn't change much. It's the parent number.
Correct.
So it sounds, feels like COVID.
Right. Well, I, I think, you know, I mean, the schools look at the survey results too. And I think there has been an emphasis on trying to get that information out to the students and to the families. And it looks like it's been more successful with students because they rate pretty high that they know what to do because they're on campus and they know who are the key people that can keep them safe in any kind of crisis. But the parents, we probably still need to communicate with them a little better. Yes. I lost my slides. Okay, thank you. So the next section is school safety, but bullying. And the area that changed there is, do you know how to report bullying at your school? And that went down because many of our students hadn't had any experience at their new school. They didn't make that transition, so they don't know how to do that. Now they do, so we should see that bump back up, you know, when we do our survey in the spring. Academic support. So you can see this, again, pretty consistent, you know, that we do provide a lot. Of course, the staff knows what all the supports are, so they're consistently higher than everybody else. But the students too, 78% is a pretty good number about students who know where to find academic support. In the area of mental health, I think we've seen, you can see that there's some gains there. So it says, my school provides sufficient resources to help students who are having social, emotional, or mental health problems. So we have seen good growth there with staff. And my school makes students aware of resources that could help them with their social, emotional, or mental health needs, and also some good growth there. So.
Big, big shout out there because, again, that growth on the staff side, again, our, our first line of defense are, are staff. So the fact that they are showing through a nine-point jump about resources. Thank you to everybody for doubling down on that and making those relationships work.
Yeah, that's really Dr. Prama and his team. You know, they really focused on that with the student services and the nursing staff as well.
Not shocking, but thank you.
Okay, student and family engagement. So again, we had some gains there too. So parents express positive opinions of leadership at their child's school, but see district leaders as less available. That continues to be constant. And then school site leadership is available and accessible. And I was, I was glad to see that staff still feels pretty supported by their district, or their site admin, rather. That's really important. And then in career technical education, again, we're pretty consistent. You know, there's not a lot of change here. But the, excuse me, the CTE program provides strong preparation to work in a future profession. It prepares me for college and trade schools, prepares me for post-secondary education. And the numbers here are more reflection on the population of students, the numbers that are actually taking those courses because not everybody is exposed to them. But that takes the survey, I mean. And so for next steps, we have to administer the survey again in the spring, consider professional development in the area of customer service, and consider addition of questions surrounding the district work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, now that we have a coordinator in place and we really are trying to implement the district goals, that's going to be long-term work, so that will want to be embedded, embedded in our survey as well. So, any questions?
Can I ask that we work to add a few questions around how people are experiencing anxiety as they return to school or challenges as they return to school? I realize we want a year-over-year, generally with the broader questions, but I feel like we're going to be managing kind of the, really, the impacts of trauma right and left. And so it helps to try and get, at least for me, to see where students are placing priorities, where parents are placing priorities, and if there's a divergence in where those resources are trying to be committed or where people perceive there need to be resources. We may be tackling this through another survey, so, you know.
We are.
There we go. Okay, so if that's the case, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, again, even if we do a temperature check again in the spring, right, with the first survey to, to assess kind of a damage report and then keep checking in some way, shape, or form, if we can keep that somewhat present, even if it's not here.
Yes.
That would be, but otherwise, you know, thank you on the update. I, I will, it is interesting to see the numbers move so little despite such overwhelming changes. So I, I do, you know, there's other stories that need to be told from this data, right?
Absolutely.
That I think is to be read into. But again, you know, it seems overall, parents are, are saying more communication is happening. Still room for improvement when we're in the 70 percentage.
Yes.
Seventieth percentile, but like, again, just a way to move the, the needle in, in, really, in really challenging circumstances.
Great.
Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Couple of questions, and this made, I'm just going to plead ignorance. I think I have like two more months where I could do that. How do we get this survey out to the students and the parents and the faculty?
So we send them all their own individual link in an email. And we also put it on the district website, and teachers put it in the Google Classroom. So it's an online survey, and so we have a lot of different ways to get it out to them.
And I assume too that it's in multiple languages?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any thought about, I mean, the numbers increased, which is great as far as participation, but I wonder if there's any conversation about how we can increase participation? I don't know, I'm sure you've had those.
Every year.
I'm sure. I'm sure. No, 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 I'm not, yeah, it's definitely up. I think just.
According to our researchers that help us with the survey though, it's a really, really good participation.
Yeah.
It's not what we want because we want everybody to take the survey, but they're, they're talking in terms of being valid and reliable. So they're really good numbers, so.
Great. I also just wanted to say that I think that the, the next. Um, I also just wanted to say that I think that the, the next steps, uh, including questions around the work around DEI is going to be really important to help us gauge how successful or impactful the work is. But, um, thank you for this. And the format, like Ms. Tabit said, is really, for someone like me who's not great with numbers, this is really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, Dr. Agakanyan?
I, I just want to echo what my colleague said and thank you. This, the data and what we're getting, it's incredible compared to what we're seeing in higher education, which is not even half. And these are individuals who have access. So thank you very much for doing this. I'm very, very happy to see such a good number in terms of responses and, and.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Casao. Uh, we'll move on to, we can move past twelve A, which we have done. So we'll move on to thirteen, uh, new and unfinished business.
Sorry, I apologize.
I didn't know if it was a question on something else.
Sorry, no.
Okay, uh, thirteen A, adoption of resolution thirteen proclaiming November, uh, twenty-twenty-one as Burbank Unified School District's native, uh, National Native American Heritage Month.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
Uh, I will move that the Board of Education adopt resolution thirteen proclaiming November twenty-twenty-one as Burbank Unified School District's native, uh, National Native American Heritage Month as presented.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Any comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, and I see you're pulling up, okay.
Pretty, uh, resolution thirteen proclaiming November, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, the Burbank Unified School District's National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas from November first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, uh, the United States celebrates National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas Na- National Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States. And whereas the, whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. And whereas Governor Jerry Brown signed AB seven thirty-eight, which requires the state's instructional quality commission to create a Native American Studies class curriculum for high schools that will satisfy the elective course requirement for admission to the University of California and California State in AB twenty-sixteen, which creates an elective high school ethnic studies course that could also include Native American history and culture. And whereas the Bureau of Census, uh, of the Census estimated that in twenty-ten, there were more than five million individuals of Native American descent in the United States. And whereas, um, uh, Native Americans, uh, maintain vibrant cultures and traditions and hold a deeply rooted sense of community, have made, uh, distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language and art. Whereas Native American leaders like Muakima Olone Tribe Chair Rosemary Canberra, and if I butchered that name, my, my sincerest apologies. Winnebago and Chipewa Attorney Colin Cloud Hampson, Amma Mutsum Tribal Chair, Tribal Band Chair Valentin Lopez and Indian Can- Canyon Tribal Chair Anne Marie Sayers have sustained Native American culture and traditions and shared them with students, scholars and the community. Therefore, be it resolved, the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of twenty-twenty-one, November twenty-twenty-one as National Native American Heritage Month and urges all schools in the community to observe, uh, National Native American Heritage Month with appropriate programs and activities. And just as a personal privilege, you know, uh, Dr. Weisberg, uh, in her responses begins with a land acknowledgement. And so if we could bring back as an agenda item, a consideration to add a land acknowledgement to our agenda as kind of a standing, uh, I, a part of our agenda, um, for discussion for the board as a part of this, uh, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I'll move on to thirteen B, approval of the district's initial proposal for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two amendment to the current collective bargaining agreement with the Burbank Teachers Association.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approve the district's initial proposal for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two amendment to the current collective bargaining agreement with the Burbank Teachers Association as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan. Uh, Dr. Neiman, can you inform us? There was one last meeting that was kind of off.
Somebody's, all of them.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Thank you, President Fritner. So, uh, tonight you'll see thirteen B and thirteen C are together. Uh, the, every year we have to present our proposals. It's part of the sunshine process and negotiations. Every three years, we negotiate a successor agreement and in the, in between years, we negotiate amendments. In amendments, each, uh, side of the team can present automatically compensation and benefits. Those are automatic and then two additional articles for negotiations. We have been negotiating with BTA for two years straight and we're looking forward to negotiating actually just the contract this year. So you'll see our proposals, our compensation and health and welfare, which is required by law that we open every year. And in addition, as we deal with hot topics, we can, um, mutually agree to add language to the contract.
Great, thank you, Dr. Neiman. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Yes, please.
And we start October twenty-ninth, so next Friday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a question, Dr. Agakanyan? Nope, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking to, okay. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero, thank you. Uh, thirteen C, acceptance of the Burbank Teachers Association, CTA NEA, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two proposal for bargaining and amendment to the current agreement with the Burbank Unified School District.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education accept the Burbank Teachers Association, CTA NEA, initial proposal for bargaining and an amendment to the current agreement, uh, with Burbank Unified School District as presented.
Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan. Dr. Neiman had already given us the information regarding this. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item thirteen D, approval of the John Burrows High School Overnight Field Trip.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approve the John Burrows High School Play Production Overnight Field Trip with our best wishes, uh, as a request to, uh, participate in the California Educational Theater Conference in Rancho Cucamonga, uh, from Friday, January fourteenth to Sunday, January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Uh, I don't think we need any explanation from Dr. Pramo. Any discussion? Oh, Dr. Pramo, as I saw you, are you up for the next one?
I didn't know if you had questions on this one, but I'm up for the next one as well.
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. And I will just say, uh, the play sounds fascinating. Mr. Myers was at the luncheon and, uh, I can't remember the name, but it's kind of a, uh, about, um, the world of Harry Potter except seen from the Hufflepuff's point of view. So it sounds great, it's going to be at Burrows.
Are you a Hufflepuff?
I, I.
He's a Hufflepuff.
I have no idea, but it just sounded, when he explained it, already I was laughing, so.
Amazing.
That, that, it'll be at Burrows in, uh, November. I, I can't remember the dates, I have them written down somewhere, but.
It's the weekend before Thanksgiving.
Yes, correct, that was it, so. Make plans, it sounds great. And they've had great productions over the years, so. Moving on, uh, thirteen E, approval of the school-connected independent five-oh-one-C-three organizations for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
President Frit.
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education approve the school-connected independent five-oh-one-C-three organizations school year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two pursuant to administrative regulation twelve-thirty, community relations, school-connected organizations effective October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one through October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two as presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Tabit and seconded by Dr. Agakanyan. Now, Dr. Pramo.
So we have six organizations that, our, our number of five-oh-one-C-threes is getting smaller each year. So at Burbank High, we have the Youth Vocal Arts Foundation and Boys Baseball. At John Burrows High School, we have the VMA, the IMA, Arrowhead Football Boosters and the Baseball Boosters. I really need to acknowledge both high school principals and both assistant principals of athletics who have done an amazing job. They've really taken an active role in examining these packets. So that by time I get them, like this year was above and beyond the most perfect packets I've ever received. They were complete, they were on time. Uh, that was a long time coming. We had a few rough years, uh, but this time around, it was just amazing and very well done. So shout out to our site administrators.
Mr. Ferguson?
Two flags, uh, just, just, uh, thank you, uh, to all the organizations for complying and, and getting all the paperwork together. I know it's not easy. Ms. Tabit, I just confirming in your motion, you said, you said October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. I just want to confirm, we're, we're sticking to October twentieth, twenty-two. Hey, it's what I heard, so just want to clarify that that's the twentieth. As long as you're, it's in the motion language, but just wanted to make sure we're not.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that just is the. Okay, great, so just confirming that. And then the second thing is just, uh, yes, we have one of the boosters that's named the JBHS Arrowhead Football. So I, I will say, just as my commentary, that I expect before next year, I, if, if we need to identify a pathway to update that, I, I'm, I'm even hesitant honestly to approve now, um, with, with an entire summer, so.
We could, we, I've already had the conversation with the principal and he is working with the organization to remove that word from their packet. However, that is how the packet came in.
Can, can I ask for the following? That we, that we offer a ninety-day conditional approval right now for the Arrowhead Organization? And again, not pulling, but that a check-in occurs at the ninety-day mark with the board.
Can I make some?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, first of all, I think for a five-oh-one-C-three to get.
It's complicated, I got it.
Et cetera, is very complicated. They're at the end of their football season.
Yep.
So maybe if you want to say by the end of the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two, that might be more reasonable. Um, I doubt as a football fundraising organization, they will do, they won't be doing much, I would imagine, after football season ends.
Right.
Until spring practice possibly starts. So that would give them five to six months to get things in order to change that name.
I, I'm fine with a total of six months. I'm not, like, I, like, people are writing checks and students are existing under this organization's title and they may be offended by it. So, and we're asking this organization through this approval to go out on behalf of the school district and raise funds. So that's where my flag is.
I completely understand.
So, so, so not pulling the plug, but again, can we have a check-in at the beginning of the next semester? Just on the status of that transition?
Sure.
Uh, and, and, and again, just to emphasize it, it's important that it gets done.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, dope. Thank you for, for your flexibility and working with me on that.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Uh, and just thank you again and, and to the administrators, because yes, we know how much work goes into this.
Amen.
And, and something they were able to take off of your plate because you've been the one doing it all these years prior. Uh, so, uh, thank you to them for the, the work put in and thank you to the organizations for making the effort to, uh, you know, get all their paperwork in.
Thank you.
I just, I.
Ms. Tabit.
I wanted to tag on to that as well because, you know, we've had this conversation for the last, I don't know, ten years maybe. And so to see that finally our conversations have come to fruition where it's not all being dumped on your desk and that pathways are being followed as we laid out exceptionally, that's awesome. And thank you to the assistant principals and the principals both.
I, I think you might be interested in knowing that the, the, the packet that would win the award for, for being the most complete, accurate, well-done is the Arrowhead Football Boosters. Yep. No, just because we, it, it's, that's been difficult for us, but they, they put a packet together that was just amazing, so.
Yeah, we've, there's been hills and valleys.
Yes.
Different organizations.
For sure, for sure.
That's really good to hear.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Uh, thirteen F, ratification of the Burbank Unified School District Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Plan, SR three plan.
President Fritner.
Uh, I will move that the Board of Education ratify the Burbank Unified School District Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Plan, SR three plan, effective March thirteenth, twenty-twenty through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan. Uh, Ms. Casao.
Thank you, President Fritner. So this is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds and it is part of the larger COVID funding umbrella. Can I have the slides, please? Thank you. So you can see that our total allocation is twelve million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand doll, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and that we had from three thirteen, twenty-twenty to nine thirty, twenty-twenty-three, which is why this is a ratification because we were able to go back and recover some of those costs. The elements of the plan that we had to include were strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning, addressing lost instructional time. And then we had to explain what we were going to do with any remaining funds as well. And making sure that we had interventions that were addressing student needs. So this is, um, our budget and how we're allocating the funds. So the first, um, significant piece is class size reduction for both elementary and secondary classrooms. So that enabled us to have fewer combination classes and really focus on instruction, especially on this important return to school year. So the first year for elementary is one million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and we're doing that for two years. And then at, uh, secondary, it was seven hundred thousand, which includes expansion of the Independent Learning Academy by a couple of teachers and then continuing with, um, five hundred thousand for the next year. Continuing, we're also able to maintain funding for temporary teachers. We have a lot of temporary teachers in the district whose contracts would have ended. And the problem is, is that even though we have this COVID funding, we're still in a district budget crisis. And this is kind of being, enabling us to avert some of those layoffs that we would have been putting in, in process. So this was really fortuitous for us. The next, um, item is the increased cost of substitute teachers. You know, as we know, we've had to raise the rates and we had to set aside quite a bit of money to be able to cover the costs for that too. So we have a million set aside for that. We also incurred costs for independent study because we had to develop programs, in particular at elementary and for sixth grade that we didn't have before. And so that, um, these are the funds for that. In addition to that, we also bought some technology. We need, we had a huge need for Chromebooks, which was, you know, a million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. Hotspots, nineteen hundred and fifty hotspots for two hundred and forty-nine thousand and a technology technician as well because we had so many more devices.
And those hotspots are, are, that's not the purchase price, that's a user agreement price, correct?
I'm not really sure.
It's the monthly fees.
Okay, so the, so that, also known as, that's an ongoing cost that, it, that without this funding will need to be passed on to, uh, the general fund.
Thirty-one dollars a month. Who, who's the provider we're getting the hotspots from?
T-Mobile.
Thank you, Ms. Kupda. Okay, so we're also addressing the impact of lost instructional time by addressing social emotional needs. And so this is a program specifically for the high school that is, um, it's a really comprehensive program. It's also in use at middle school and it, um, it's, has equity foundations and includes trauma-informed practices, which, um, blends nicely with our work with PBIS this year as well. And then when, um, previously I said we had to describe how we're using the remaining funds and it still is all, you know, COVID-related. So the food services, you know, which, you know, we had the expansive, um, food offerings for our students this year. So we, um, are putting six hundred thousand dollars towards those costs and some overtime costs and then our indirect costs, which are the costs that it takes for all of our staff members to actually implement the grant. So we are required to also monitor progress. So we are required to also monitor progress because the, the end goal is that all of this will help students and their performance. So we still have our academic goals that are in our LCAP, you know, to increase the percentage of students who exceed or meet standards in both English and in mathematics. And we will also be looking at, cause, um, as we mentioned before, we also have the mental health and wellness survey, which will be administered. And we'll be looking at those results too, to see the impact. And, um, and then just our accounting, you know, how many Chromebooks and hotspots were issued to students? Um, documenting our spending for food services and for, um, overtime costs as well. So we have all of the, um, data. And the last slide is another, um, grant that is, um, on the horizon, which is the Educator Effectiveness Grant. And that is really for professional learning for teachers, administrators and paraprofessionals. And, um, we'll be putting that plan together as well. So. Any questions?
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you. Uh, you know, as was kind of mentioned, I believe, uh, Ms. Kukta had a presentation a while back that had, you know, all the different gift cards, if you will, of funding. Um, that's really helpful. So in future, just budget updates, if we could bring that back. So again, in context, everybody can see the difference between S R one, S R three, all of that. You did a wonderful job in your report, kind of explaining it. But, uh, it, it helps us explain, you know, the situation is a lot of federal spending is happening and we have to be accountable for that funding. Um, the other component, I, I would just like, if we can make sure to break away this data as we do presentations moving forward, just what is being funded right now under COVID funding and what is being funded under general fund that will have to return when that funding is expired? So that doesn't have a home right now that we've moved, we've moved some of these costs off to temporary grant funding. That's great. As we can see here in the presentation, we have to spend by 2023, all this money. So eventually those are going to need to find homes for funding in the long term as we tackle this budget problem. So just in terms of presentations moving forward, if we could break that out, it just allows us to keep those top of mind.
Would, would definitely highlight that. I also want to illustrate or highlight that we, when we know, we, so some expenses were two years that are on COVID. We put it back in the third year out into the general fund. So we don't have that fiscal cliff. Now some of these may be going, uh, longer than our financial forecast. And those were definitely need to highlight. So we'll highlight both, those that came off the general fund, the ones that are back in the out years in the general fund and those that need to go back in the out year.
Yeah. Sometimes our microphones are turned on, but we're not hearing it. So just a heads up, Ms. Kukta did press her mic. Uh, her years as city treasurer, you know, gave her a black belt and microphone and school board. Uh, so, uh, congrats. Uh, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it, it is also about setting expectations for parents around. There are a lot of supports right now that parents and students are taking advantage of. And as a result, their educational experiences enhance. Great. Fantastic. We want that. Uh, but as we all know, even look at testing, right? As that gets, as the funding runs out and we have to pull that back, people need to make plans. So I, I want to be able to do that clearly while also still communicating as Ms. Cusay said, we have a budget crisis. Uh, that's millions of dollars in nature and this is allowed to us to slow down.
Yes.
The, the trajectory of the glide path, if you will, but, uh, we still need to do a lot of work to stabilize it. So thank you.
I have a question.
So in terms of when it comes to budgeting, uh, you know, just right now, because of what's happening with the supply chain, for example, you're seeing this increases of pricing. How much wiggle room do we have? Cause we throw these numbers, then two weeks later you see items shift. I mean, we just bought a sink and the price in two weeks went $300 and went down.
We have some, but what happens is it's going to impact the budget in other areas. So it's not like we have new money. You still have to live within the budget.
Kind of your point. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you, Ms. Cusay. Uh, any further discussion? I'm seeing none. So all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 13G, adoption of resolution 14 for the elimination or reduction of services for classified positions.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education to adopt resolution 14 for the elimination or reduction of services for classified positions as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Agarconian, Dr. Nieman. And choose the microphone that works, I guess.
I'll pick this one. Uh, there are two positions up for elimination tonight, uh, with classified and one for reduction, and all of them are vacant. So it will not involve dumping.
Right. Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 13H, acceptance of gifts.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move that the Board of Education, uh, take formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district. And that the board president, uh, convey in Dodger exuberant, uh, appreciation, uh, to the donors as presented.
Uh, it's been moved by Ms. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Agarconian. Uh, all those in favor, I'm presuming there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And I will have to remind you. Well, I am very happy for all my Dodger friends, fans. Uh, my team got eliminated, uh, last week. So I, I don't know how much enthusiasm I can generate just because.
President Fritner, nobody's perfect. It's okay.
Are you Red Sox or Cubs?
White Sox.
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
I'm, I'm, uh, the Board of Education takes formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district. Uh, the Jefferson Fundraising Committee, uh, JFC wishes to donate to the district $3,895.53 to be used for the Scholastic Book Fair Fall fundraiser at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $800 to be used for monthly meeting support services at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Uh, the JFC wishes to donate to the district $2,317.75 to be used for Kichella expenses at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. I'm not sure what Kichella is, but I'm sure that Play on Coachella, I guess. Uh, and last but not least, David Lynn wishes to donate to the district materials and supplies valued, valued at $75 to be used district-wide. Thank you to all of our donors, heavy on Jefferson Fundraising Committee this month, but we appreciate any and all donations to the districts. They are greatly appreciated. Uh, we'll move on to item 14, the consent agenda.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move items 14A through 14O, except for which items board members wish to pull.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson and seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Uh, are there any items anyone needs to be pulled? Things should be pulled. Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of approving items 14A through 14O, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we will move ahead to, uh, before we get to our last public comment, we have one retirement to recognize this month. Uh, Gada Bakos, who is an instructional assistant at the Children's Center, began her service, uh, on, in June of 1999. So about 22 years. So congratulations. We wish you well in your retirement. Uh, now we will move to our item 15, request to address the board. Do we have a card? You can go ahead if you, yeah. Mr. Schlossman?
You know, Mr. Superintendent, of course you mischaracterized what I said. I was talking about self-defense. And you said that I'm in favor of violence. Of course I'm, I'm not in favor of violence. Two different things. And you know, we have a military and I think our military uses a little violence once in a while. You know, the policemen that you invite into our schools, all around their belt, they have tools and they're violent. They, they employ violence. I don't know if you knew that or not. And sometimes it's necessary to defeat the threat. And why is it that only police officers can use violence to defeat the threat? You know, we had a recent event. I don't know if you read about it or not. It was in a different state. A woman was on a train and she was raped for 45 minutes and 20 people watched and got out their phones and did nothing to help. And George Carlin, he's a comedian, he's dead now, but he used a term, he coined the term pussification, the pussification of America. And I'm trying to tell you that self-defense is an important tool. It's a legal tool. Of course we should avoid violence, but sometimes it's necessary. You know, you live in Santa Monica, there's a lot of violence in Santa Monica. It's a little different than Burbank. You know, it's here. I'm talking about our students. You know, we've had schools shot up and some people think run and hide, get away. And some other experts say, no, engage that person, throw your backpack at them, books, chairs, anything to stop the violence, to stop them from doing that action, that horrible action where they're injuring others. You have to employ violence. And you can't count on everybody. We had a school shooting when there was a policeman there and he hit outside. He didn't run in. I believe it's important to engage, immediately stop the violence. If somebody's attacking one of our employees or one of our students, I want it stopped right now, when seconds count. Now, a different subject. Ms. Weisberg, you use the term gender fluidity. Okay. Some people disagree with you. Some people say there's no such thing. I watched a video today of a fella, and I don't agree with everything he says, but I think he's plenty intelligent. His name is Ben Shapiro. And, uh, you know, he gave the example of a man, a biological man. And he cuts off his penis or turns it inside out and hollows it out, takes estrogen, hormones, softens his facial hair, wears makeup, grows his hair long, wears female clothes that would be associated with a female. And he asks the question, does that make this man a biological female? So I'm going to put that question to you. Do you agree or disagree? I mean, it's really a yes or no. A man has taken hormones and, and, and done all these things, identifies as a female, but does it make him a biological female? Does science go out the window? Does chromosomes go out the window? So, you know, I'm not saying I agree, I disagree. I'm just asking you this question because you talk about it a lot. And when Mr. Shapiro was talking about it, who's very highly educated, I never once thought that he was homophobic. I thought that he was just making some points that some people may agree with and some people like you probably disagree with. So that's just something to think about when you throw that term out, that not everybody agrees with you. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Received another card, uh, Ms. Weigle.
Thanks, um, for the opportunity. I forgot to ask about testing. I noticed we had an email from Mr. James about, um, testing for COVID for students and staff that was limited. It would be on Mondays, I think from two to four. And I was just wondering what that was for. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, staff responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Fritner. For our students and employees who are gender fluid or transgender, uh, I know it's hard to listen to public comment when they try to identify you as a term or terminology. And on behalf of all of our employees, our community members and our students, I just want you to know, as superintendent of this district, we see you, we hear you. We do not agree with vile public comment like that. For female students and employees and community members, I also do not agree with public comments that use, quote comedians that use misogynistic terminology, uh, that try to use vulgar terms for female anatomy and then try to apply that, that it's soft or weak. It's disgusting. Mr. Schlossman, I told you, when you come up here with racist, homophobic, misogynistic terms, I'm going to call you on it. You have every right under the First Amendment to speak your mind and say it, but I have every right to call you out when you keep doing that. And I encourage you to watch your first comments and your last comments and reflect on what you said. And you may stand by it and I may continue just to disagree with you. Ms. Weigle, uh, on the testing, uh, part of the governor's order this week, uh, we needed to make sure we provided testing for employees. And so that was the, the Monday available, for available. Uh, as we've been going through reasonable accommodations, uh, some employees have received a medical or religious exemption where they will need to be tested, uh, twice a week. So the clinic may be available for those specific individuals, uh, in addition to our student athletes and student performers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Any staff comments? Dr. Weisberg?
Uh, yeah. Just want to echo what, what Dr. Hill said. Um, Ben Shapiro, and it seems you, Mr. Schlossman, have a very, uh, weak understanding of the, uh, many aspects of gender identity and gender fluidity. And I talk about it a lot because it's an important thing to talk about. Uh, you know, I read at the beginning of my public, uh, of my response, that today is a day where we're supposed to be standing up for our students, our members of the LGBTQ plus community, uh, against bullying and intimidation. Uh, Ben Shapiro is a homophobe. He's also transphobic. The comments he makes are both of those things and he does it continuously. We have students who are members of the LGBTQ plus community who listen to this and they listen to you try to couch your hate speech in a reasonable back and forth. Gender fluidity is a thing. It's not up to me to decide whether or not somebody views themselves as a male or a female. That's up to them and the decision they make on theirself. It is my job as an educator and a school board member to respect it, support it, and create an environment in which they feel safe, heard and celebrated. That's it. So I encourage you to do a little bit more research. I want to thank Dr. Hill for speaking so powerfully. Uh, I think we all up here agree with him. Um, and I want to celebrate any student who is, who identifies as gender fluid, uh, transgender or any number of other things. Uh, to echo Dr. Hill, we see you, we hear you and we support you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah. Um, not thrilled frankly with where public comments going. Um, not that you don't have a right to say anything you said. Again, I, I just have a right to. As a member of the LGBTQ community, and your, your comments really challenge me at times. And you know what? I, I'm getting there. Um, I can't change your views on, on the experience of LGBTQ people, possibly not. But I have seen you come to this podium before, right? And I try and listen when you are being constructed. You're not making eye contact with me. You're ignoring me. So I just, I'm responding to you in public comment and you're looking away. So you call us out when we don't engage with you. I'm calling you out just out of respect. Thank you. It's really hard to hear you sometimes come up and you share stories with us, right? Anecdotal stories where you hear about students being bullied. And your own son at times has been used as an example in the experiences that he has had where he has felt isolated, where he has felt less than on a campus. And you have been indignant about that experience. And, and I respect that because I think that people and students should be able to go on camp. on campuses and feel safe. Your language, whether, you know it or not, and whether your intention is otherwise, is hurtful. And I'm very confused by it at times, only because I do see, even if I don't believe they're the right efforts, I, I do see, you know, for instance, your parade float concept where you, you said, look, I designed a parade float with two gay men on it. I'm, I'm doing my best to try and, to stay engaged and to not write you off, but your comments are hurtful and to a community that's more fragile than most. I have been very resistant because of your attitude, frankly, at times, and just my interpretation to meet with you. It's been, I, I don't feel safe with you, just to be honest, I don't. Okay, that's, and I, once again, don't trivialize my experience, I'm telling it. You can disagree with it, but once again, you're trivializing the experience of an LGBT person who's sitting here, taking the time to have patience with you. And not to write you off as a bigot or a crazy or something that I can quickly do, right? Which is everything that, that is wrong with our country, right? You don't agree with me, so I don't have to listen to you anymore. I can just demonize you. My number is 818-415-9048. If you want to sit down and talk about this issue, I don't know how, but I'm willing. But these comments, I need you to hear, whether you agree with me or not, that what you are saying is creating an environment where people feel less safe. You can continue saying what you believe, I'm not going to stop you there, but there are consequences and it is impacting people. You now have my cell phone number and if you want to call and if we want to meet and if you're really genuinely interested on why there's a difference in perspectives. We don't have to agree at the end of it. I promise you, we probably won't. But if you're really trying to seek understanding, I'm making myself available for it. And I don't know why. Beyond, this is my job. I have to work with neighbors, even if I don't agree with them, because that's what this job takes and you've called us out for it in previous occasions. So this is my hand to you. And I'm shaken because I'm angry, but I'm, I'm extending. And I, I want to be clear, it's the last time I'll do it.
Ben Shapiro may be very intelligent, he's also an extreme right-wing commentator and activist. And for you to choose some discussion that he started on the radio to bring into this discussion that trivializes what many transgender individuals go through. Gender identity is not all about, not all about physical transformations. There's a lot of science, if you really want to study the subject, educate yourself about it, that indicates individuals that XY chromosomes are not just very basic, there's a lot of XXY and XYY. There are a lot of individuals that have been born with physical traits. Individuals, transgender individuals, who make the decision, and it's not an easy decision because it's incredibly complicated, but who make the decision to go through the physical transformation to be their authentic selves, should not have their experiences trivialized for some stupid point that you're trying to make. We listen to a lot that you have to say. We listen to a lot that you have to say and we put up with all kinds of it. But I'm not going to put up with some of it. This was out of bounds, this was something that did not need to be brought up. You brought it up! If you want to discuss school, district-related issues, you have the right to do that. But if you start out an issue like that again, I'm cutting you off and you can sue me if Meeting is adjourned at 9:55.